All righty, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us here at City Hall and in council chambers. I'd like to call this, let's call the meeting to order first. And Ms. What did I, or I'm sorry, Ms. Box, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Paulette Cuahardo.
Present.
Councilmembers Rowland Barrera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos. Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley. Everett Roy.
Present.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zenoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Bug Bryson, instead.
That's only requires city charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you so much. So this morning, we are here to conduct and present our first workshop of five workshops. This workshop today will be on police, fire, municipal court, and development services code enforcement for the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. So thank you so much and for everybody joining us, thank you for joining us. This is a great opportunity to be a part of the process. We'll also have community input sessions that will allow even more opportunity for our residents and community to be the part, to be a part of this process. So with that, I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Zenoni.
Okay, great. You summed it up well, Mayor, so just as a reminder, this week, we have this first work session, and then Thursday, we have a second one. And Thursday's departments are more quality of life, and many of the departments like our parks and Health Department and a few others. So today, we're focused on public safety, municipal court, and development services. And then, as you mentioned, next week, we began our community input sessions. And we know that we have five of those, one in each city council district, next week and the week after for those. So our department heads and chiefs are here, and we're going to begin this year with police, and Chief Mike Markle is here to present. Okay, and the council does have in front of you a paper handout of the material, as well as I believe it's on the Legis- Legistar. And we do try to get this to you at least the day before. There's a lot of compilation of data, and we're, we're, we're pressed for time because we're doing community engagement sessions, council meetings, and these workshops. So the goal is to get to this at least the day before, because we're still compiling it. Like later today, we'll wrap up, or tomorrow, the work session for Thursday. So we would ideally like to get it to you as soon as we can, but we have a lot happening because of the compression of community engagement, council workshops, and the council meetings. But nonetheless, you do have the material here in front of you, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Mike Markle.
Well, Peter, I'd just like to say, I didn't receive my Legistar update until seven o'clock last night.
Right.
And hopefully, we can get those to council members sooner than that.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief Markle. Welcome.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Mike Markle, Police Department.
Good morning.
I'm going to present to you the proposed 24 budget. If we skip right to page two, you'll see our mission statement. Is it, I think I lost the budget up here. When we go on without, okay, there we go. All right, there we go. Page two, our mission statement. We work to reduce crime, the fear of crime, and enhance public safety. About the Police Department, real quickly, as you know, we receive over 400,000 calls for service every year. We investigate over 20,000 criminal incidents, and we provide traffic enforcement. Numerous city activities, parades, over 100 of those every year. Keeps us quite busy. Page four, our services. Our services, of course, we respond to calls, investigate crimes, enforce traffic laws, and we work with the community. And pertaining to last week's conversation about our community involvement, we've added another slide for community outreach, which is on page six, or five. And we thought that was important, because we do quite a bit. There's not a department in the Police Department that doesn't have a community outreach or intervention program. Literally, every department we have. We have Neighbors on Watch, we have a CC PAL, serving over 3,000 children. We have our Operation Safe Return, which will serve 5,000 children. Hopefully, you'll, you'll be there Saturday at the American Bank Center. It's going to be a huge event. It'll provide shots, backpacks, school supplies, physicals, all free to the public. It's a great coordinated effort. You'll see over 120 vendors there from the city coming together to pay for all this. You'll see departments like the Health Department there participating. It's a wonderful outreach program. These are just your typical programs your PD does. What you don't see are our domestic violence 101 class that we provide to stop ladies from being victims of spousal abuse. You don't see our ICAC unit, which is an intervention between child predators. We work with the U.S. Attorney's Office, the FBI, and Homeland Security. We have one of the best intervention units there with 100% prosecution rate for child predators in the nation. We shut down Backpage. I know I bragged about that before, and I think it's important that we hear these things again, because there's a lot for y'all to be proud of. There's a lot for y'all to brag about. You funded these programs. Many of these programs, we talked about crime control, we're in the original crime control budget, and they flourish today just being paid for in operational funds, in your general fund. And because we believe that community outreach and intervention is not a program, it's a philosophical approach to policing. It's what we do day in and day out. So we don't rely on programs to do a lot of those things. Next page, you'll see our organizational chart. We have a great team. As Peter said, we have a strong bench, and we absolutely do. We'll turn to page seven, and you'll see some of 23, fiscal year 23 achievements. Thus far, we've added 45 police officers in the fourth year of a five-year plan. Now remember, the original five-year plan was five over five, or 25 officers. With the addition of these nine that are proposed in this budget, we'll be at 54. We'll, we'll have more than doubled the proposed 25, and that's just a wonderful achievement. New police training academy is under construction now. If you've been out there, you'll see it's, it's moving quickly. We have some great photography going on right now. We're going to be able to show you all the progression of that when it's done. It's nice. Enhancement of forensic unit, something you don't get to see, but it's a great investment by City Manager and you all. We've cleaned the office space, better lighting, more equipment. Our forensic unit does crime scene investigation, ballistics comparisons, fingerprint analysis. It's an accredited unit, and it's a great operating area. And equipment purchases, Bearcat, which should be here at the beginning of next year, SWAT vehicle. It's a protective vehicle, armored vehicle. Helps transport officers into dangerous areas safely, and civilians and officers out of dangerous areas safely. It's a great, great tool. And you have 3D forensics. That's a real neat item. It's, you put it, it's on a tripod, and you, it'll do crime scene mapping for you automatically. It's a laser technology. It's pretty cool. Then our drones, we use drones extensively. Tasers, upgrading our tasers from the current model to the new. It increases our success rate from about 30% to 80%, which is a great intervention, less lethal option, something we're always looking for. Performance measures. You see a few of those here. Our telephone reporting unit, that's the unit that takes calls over the phone. We're trying to divert as many non-priority or low-priority calls as we can to relieve pressure from the street. Our goal this year is 23,000 of those calls. DWIs, we use grants, like the STEP grant, to pay for DWI enforcement through overtime. 1,100 DWIs is our goal next year. Number of police applicants processed, 1,100 is a goal for next year for the 84th Academy, which will start next June, I think, or July. Number of traffic citations, we're trying to get back to pre-pandemic numbers. Goal is 55,000 traffic citations for next year. Page nine is our budget overview. You'll see we have a combined budget proposal of $105.7 million, 83.6 of which is in general fund, 11.2 million in crime control, 9.1 in MetroCom, 1.8 in grants, for that total of $105.7 million. You'll see staffing, general fund variance is only one if you look below that. That is because we've moved parking control out of our, out of our budget and into economic development. That's nine positions. Of course, that's been replaced by nine police officer positions, plus one CC PAL Administrative Assistant, which is within our decision packages here in just a second. So total variance of one in the general fund. Grants is two proposed, and that's a budget that's in process, or a grant proposal that's in process right now. Move to page 11, you'll see the proposed budget general fund. Personnel is the majority of that, 69%. Operating cost is 11%. Allocation is 18%. Capital investment, 2% or $1.7 million. Crime control budget, it's a budget we spoke of last week. Personnel, 64% of that budget. Operating cost is 20% or $2.2 million. allocations within their nine, or $1 million or 9%. Capital investment is 0.8 million, $800,000. Move to page 12.
Chief, just for informational purposes, how mu- how many officers does the crime control budget fund?
Seventy-eight.
Uh, seventy-eight, seventy-eight officers. Good job.
Mayor, I knew the answer to that question before I asked it. I just wanted to make sure everybody else did.
Yes, sir. So we're on page 12, MetroCom budget. Do I just go over this budget?
Thirteen.
I think you're, Chief, I think you're, I think we're one page ahead of presentation material than yours.
Okay.
Yeah, what page are you on?
I'm on page 12, MetroCom Fund.
Okay, so that's thirteen, yeah, page 13 for us.
Wonder why we lost a page in this?
Yeah, it's all right. No, it's just since the beginning, you've been up one. Yeah, it's all right.
Yes, sir. So MetroCom Fund, page 9.1 million, $6.4 million in personnel, 2.2 million in operating, 0.7 in allocations. And you'll see the city's contribution to MetroCom is about $4 million, or 44% of the budget. That's paid through an inter-local agreement with the county and Driscoll and Bishop, which is, they pay a small fee to be included in our dispatch.
And the mayor's on the, on the crime control board of sorts with Judge.
The MetroCom.
Judge Scott, so the county, we know, is working on their budget as well. So that inter-local agreement guides the payment amount.
Right.
Right, so costs have gone up, and payments a little bit more this year.
A little bit more this year. It's 23%.
Right.
The alternative.
MetroCom Board.
What's that?
MetroCom Board.
Right, yes.
I think you said crime control.
I'm sorry, I think it's MetroCom Board, yes.
Yes, I was just break.
There'll be a meeting coming up, I believe, this week or next week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Peter Collins is one of our leads on there.
Right.
Okay. So go over some of our enhancements this year. Nine more police officer positions. That's a wonderful enhancement. It's going to give us that 500 number. That's, I can't thank you enough. This is, this is where we talk about time for proactive enforcement, growing some units. CID, Criminal Investigations, need more detectives, you know, traffic units need to grow. This just gives us better operational ability. As you move into a manpower number that allows more proactive time, you'll see you hit a threshold where you can impact crime, and you can intervene, because you have officers that start having time to drive down every street on their beat, right? We want folks to see our officers. We want them to be on every street, reaching out, talking to folks. And you can only do that through enhanced, enhanced force numbers. So we appreciate that very much. The second enhancement, our cadet classes. There's one that will start, 83rd will start in 9/11 of this year, most of which carried in the 24 budget. Second class will start in June of next year, and that's a class of 25. Next year's class, I hope, will spend the majority of which, if not all, in the new academy. That would be wonderful. That would be wonderful to get you all out there and say hello to those folks in the new academy. Our next enhancement, maintenance for the new police academy is $50,000. You know, cleaning, custodial work, phone, IT, moving, those kind of things. It's only going to carry the two months of that budget, being at the end of the summer. So two to three months. That's why the number is not so large. Enhancement four is convert one sworn officer. These are a couple span of control items. Another police lieutenant, and you'll see the next page is an additional police captain. These are conversions from existing positions. Something that's needed. Enhancement six is the Athletic League, Police Athletic League Administrative Support. This is near and dear to us, near and dear to me personally. It's for at-risk youth, 3,000 kids. Giving them structured sports, especially in their off time. I just can't think of a better way for better, for interaction, for self-discipline. You know, we'd rather work with our youth in these young, in these areas while they're young than have to work with them when they're older and have, you know, committed some criminal violations. So it's, and it's such a great program. You, you, I don't know, you all know Ron Zerby's, who's our senior officer. He's over there, and he administers that program at, at the gym at Morrison and Brownlee, which was donated, by the way. It's just a, it's a wonderful space.
Chief Markle, I would like, or rather, Mr. Zenoni, later on, to have a briefing, a little bit more detailed briefing on that program. I would love to hear more about it. Yeah.
That, that would be wonderful. I'd actually love to have you go over there. You know, volleyball's going on. We have, you know, our softball, baseball fields are being revamped.
I think a good just briefing overall of, of, you know, what the mission is and, and just everything that they do, which is what you're saying, but you're, you know, you can't go into it now, so.
It will be near and dear to your heart if you do so, if you spend, take a little time to go over there.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you for suggesting that.
Mayor, if I could, Chief, would you say that the Athletic League program for youth has more or less replaced what the Crime Control District was trying to do when they were budgeting money for at, at risk, youth at risk?
It's replaced, I think, well, remember, I'd, remember, Councilman, that, as I said a few minutes ago, most of the programs in crime control have been absorbed in general fund. The only one that has not was your TRIP Center, the Juvenile Delinquency Center. But enhanced, yes. Is it, is it a positive crime prevention, interactive intervention environment? Absolutely. This is, this is, these are the things that we should be striving to do, to me, as a city and as a police department, as, you know, as mentors in this city. We should be, have programs like this that.
You don't think we're falling behind on that, because it's no longer a.
I do not.
Priority at the Crime Control District budget?
No, I don't. I don't think we're falling behind in anything. I, I think, and I, and I respect different, different values and different opinions about what should happen, you know? I think somebody said something about prenatal care or something. But that's great. That should happen from the Health Department and, you know, those programs, and I'm sure they have programs that, in that realm. But your Police Department should be interactive with its community, interact with its children. It should be practicing crime prevention, not only for children, but for grownups, to stop them from continuing to be victims of crime. There's just so many dimensions there. So speaking for your Police Department, no, I think this is a wonderful benefit. I think this is a necessity. It should be part of our everyday goals to reach our, to reach our community's childrens.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Roy.
Chief, I had a question. You know, the good thing is, is that we're getting closer to moving into the new academy. Do we have an idea of what we're going to do with the existing building and that property over on Corona?
We have a couple ideas that we're, we're fleshing out right now, Councilman. Moving some units over there, maybe specialized unit, maybe communication. It's a good, it's a, it's a tilt building. It's a structurally sound building. The inside needs to, you know, probably be revamped, of course, but there are options. We don't want to give it up.
Okay.
We don't want to give it up. So there's, there's, there's transition opportunity, I'll put it that way. And, and we've, we've considered several options for utilization of that space.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We do want that building, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That's, that's all the questions for now, but go ahead.
Enhancement seven is building maintenance projects, is some funds that Peter's allowed us in our budget the last couple years to keep our main station and other buildings looking good for the public. You know, we do see a lot of public coming and going, and we have 12 buildings total. So there's things like paint and flooring and remodeling, the forensics unit, those kind of things that these funds are used for. It's very much appreciated and needed. I personally like the building downtown. I think it's a great, a great place for your main police station to be. I know a lot of folks say it's an old building, but I like that space, and maintaining it is a good thing. Enhancement eight, marked police cars, the cost of, you know, units since the pandemic has been about a 25% increase in the cars themselves, the equipment to put in those things, in those units. So this increased allocation from marked police cars helps us tremendously.
And Chief Markle on that, so how many cars is that? Or what is, how does that work? Because I think everyone has their own car, right? Or rides, I should say. They don't have their own car, but.
No, we outsee cars, so they're.
It's a single person per car?
Well, we're, we're moving in as our officers grow, and, and because of the shortage of vehicles nationwide, it's not because of anything we've done here in the city. The pandemic slowed production and put a chokehold on police cars being produced. We have several units that run two-person in a unit now, which is, which is not a bad thing either. Now, how far this will go, Mayor, it just depends on what we need those funds for. A changeover cost from one unit to another is a little less, but it's still quite expensive. You know, a base car is about $50,000, and then you'll have another $20,000 to $30,000 in equipment and changeover costs, so.
How many vehicles, how many units do we have now?
You have, I believe, 194.
We have 194 units?
I believe so, yeah. I don't want to.
With this, we'll have.
Well, this will, this will prob, this, we try to replace one-third of the fleet a year, 30 to 36 units a year, is for those in the field in patrol. So the, these will help with three to four units. These monies will help with three to four units, yeah. Doesn't go far, but it's needed.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next slide is the generator for the Flower Bluff Police Substation. City staff had the foresight to plum this all out. City staff had the foresight to plum this all out. So all your connections, electrical, gas is all stubbed out already, ready to go. I appreciate that. So, yeah. It doesn't look like a huge number. I know Peter was concerned about that, but it's literally generator, generator and installation, because everything's been built, built for it already, which is great foresight. I appreciate that.
Peter, how, how many square feet is that facility?
Four thousand.
Four thousand?
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, this building, Councilman Pusley, was co, there was two departments co-located there when I first got here five years ago. And most of it was the Health Department, who was only using like eighty percent of it once a month for a WIC-type program. Once a month they were, would use it. So we relocated them and turned the whole thing into a police substation.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
But the cost does seem to me to be a little bit high as well.
The cost for the generator or the?
Yeah, the seventy-five thousand.
I thought it was too low.
Yeah, I thought it was too low. It's a hundred KW generator.
Yeah, the library, we're putting one in the central library because it serves as a cooling and heating center, and we had to increase the budget, I think, to seven hundred and fifty thousand or something. These things are expensive. So seventy-five is, I'm hoping the chief can get it done to that. He's, he's promised me he can, but, yeah, so the central library, it's, we budgeted five hundred thousand, but the prices that came in because of these supply chain issues and inflation is close to seven hundred and fifty thousand. That's the full install, you know, the plumbing, the, I think it's a natural gas. So this one, as the chief said, a lot of the work has been done already when we retrofitted the building. So it's just a plug-in, so to speak. It's just probably a smaller.
That's the reason why the cost jumped out. I mean, the villain's already plumbed for it, so what are we having to pay an engineering firm fifty thousand dollars to tell us how to set it on the ground or, or what?
Yeah, I hope not.
Well, it's money, it's money set aside. I mean, if it's not that much, then.
Right.
Then we're okay. We, we hope it comes in less, and if it does, we, we've saved a bunch of money. But a hundred, a hundred KW, and then you, you know, they're not sitting on shelves either. It's a competitive market to find generators.
Okay. Thank you.
I stand by for any questions. That's the end of, that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
Morning, Chief. Okay, I was looking at your line item budget, and the, the numbers don't necessarily match what you have in the proposed budget. It says eighty-seven million dollars versus the eighty-three million dollars. And you said you had some things that were doubled. Just kidding, if you, in looking at the, at the line item budget, you had some items that, like, for example, you had building maintenance allocation that went from three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. Is that one of those items?
The building allocation.
Was a ninety-four percent increase.
Let me start with the eighty-seven versus eighty-three. First of all, that's the, I believe that's the four million that gets ported over to.
Yeah, Eddie will help answer that one. Eddie?
All the building allocations went up pretty substantially in all the departments, because in fiscal year twenty-three, we had some fund balance. In that fund they were used, but in twenty-four, we didn't anymore. So most of those allocations went up fairly substantially.
So are these one-time expenditures?
No, they're recurring.
Okay, but the, the additional amount, I mean, we're, we're almost doubling that, that.
Right, yeah. So as Eddie said, we use fund balance in the current year budget to kind of pay for the ongoing operating expenses. But that money was one-time, you know, the fund balance. So now we're having to use a little bit higher allocation to pay the full cost of the services for asset management.
Okay. And then you also have a eighty-four percent increase in your uniform division for clothing from three hundred and forty-one thousand to six hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, Chief can answer that one.
Yeah, I, I assume it's new, new officer. Remember, we're running two academies. That's part of the cost. New equipment all through that, the, for those new officers for two academies worth, then increased costs.
Okay, and you also have, I'm assuming that also involves minor office equipment. You didn't have a budget for that last year, but now you have one for five hundred thousand dollars?
For minor office equipment.
Under police training.
Pat, you're gonna have to help me with that one.
There's, there's a lot under police training that has a lot of increased expenditures, maintenance repairs.
That's right, the additional academy.
There's, there's a lot of additions to that that you didn't quite cover in your.
Yeah, again, that's a second academy, so we're running two academies within one budget. Since we postponed this current academy to nine, to nine eleven, the vast majority of eighty-third academy will be in the twenty-four budget, as will the, the following eighty-fifth, eighty-fourth academy will be in that same budget.
Okay, I also want to commend you on your overtime. Even though you have more personnel, you maintained your overtime budget, which reduced your total overtime budgeting to five, five point eight percent. You still have, I mean, you have various different areas where you have overtime. You did have an increase in your criminal investigation by significant amount for overtime. What, can you give a description there? It went to forty-three percent.
Those, those are call-out overtime numbers, Councilman. We, we try to predict what we're going to use, but when we have a busy year and lots of call-outs, those detectives are paid overtime.
So how, how are you doing versus your budget this year in your overtime?
We're not going to bust our budget. We'll, we'll be within our budget parameters.
Will you be beneath it or?
Yeah, yeah, yes. We're, we're not going to go over our budget, our overall budget.
Okay, I'll, I'll reserve some questions on that with some other departments. It's still, you still have a discrepancy here, and Eddie will probably have to figure this out. The, the total on that, on your proposed budget, on your line item budget is eighty-seven million, but your.
It's Metrocom, right?
Eighty-three million.
It's Metrocom, isn't the four million dollars any?
Is it Metrocom? You have, you have several budgets here that you work with. You have Metrocom, you have the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, which is about, I don't know, one point four million.
Right.
You have the Crime Control District, but the Crime Control District is a separate budget.
Separate fund.
Separate fund.
Right. It's always Metrocom is in a separate fund now.
Okay, but is that? It's not.
But we, we, we transfer money from the general fund to Metrocom to pay the city share of Metrocom.
Okay, so it really should just reflect the money transfer now.
Yeah, the four million dollars is, is a transfer from the general fund to Metrocom to, to cover the city seventy-seven percent share of the Metrocom expenses.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chief Markle, quick question. I noticed in the agenda memo, you have a little over half a million dollars that is being budgeted under the Law Enforcement Trust. So what, what are the plans for that?
Law Enforcement Trust Funds are confiscated monies.
Right.
And we use those for a myriad of things, equipment purchases, cell phones. We pay for cell phones under those, with those funds. We can use those funds for our explorer programs.
So you can really use them for anything?
Not anything, but anything, you know, law enforcement related. So, and, and there's different funds. There's state funds and there's federal funds, and each has, has a different rules on how you can expend those funds.
Okay. And I'll just kind of throw this out there, because I think this was a conversation we'd had in the past. The, you know, the Bearcat doesn't come with the SWAT helmets. But is that something, is that a great need for the department? That the helmets, those bullet, I forget the.
Yeah, their Kevlar, they're bullet resistant. It could be, yeah. I think, I think we look for JAG funds and different funds, but we can, we can expend some of those for that equipment if we need it.
That would be eligible, okay.
We, we always look at a myriad of options of how we're going to support something. There's grants, you know, we always write, we're always writing grants for equipment. There's standardized things that come in through the Fire Department, Homeland Security, things that can pay for those things.
And is this, the Law Enforcement Trust, imagine, how, how much does that fluctuate? I mean, that's a good little chunk of change there to be able to, you know, have to, to utilize.
Those monies ebb and flow depending on the size of investigations and, you know, when we call DAG, which, when we claim or, or confiscate monies, properties, auction. And then we have to split those monies with the partners, federal partners, state partners, that were involved in the investigation. So they can, there's a large variance, is what I'm saying. They can go up to a million dollars, they can go down to.
Just depending on what?
Just depending on. And they can go away tomorrow, you know? Sometimes you'll have a governor or a president that wants to take those funds and, and then they're gone, so.
Okay. I, I'd be interested, Peter, in just knowing for the council to know how those are, you know, what, what, how they're helping the department, right? However you decide to, you know, equipment or whatever it is, it would just be nice to have that briefing.
Okay, we can show that for the, maybe the past couple of years, you know?
Yeah, because that's, that's a good amount of money that's going to really make a difference in the department.
We keep track of all that. We can easily show you.
Yeah, that'd be great to show the council. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Chief, I want, I want, for just a moment, go back to your performance measures here. It's our page nine, maybe your page ten. Okay, yeah. So I want to talk specifically about the traffic citations, and your actual number was almost forty thousand in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And your estimate for twenty-three is going to be around forty-seven thousand. And then you've set as a goal fifty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-four. That's a pretty lofty goal. I mean, with the number of officers that you have now, is that going to be something that's attainable or?
It is a lofty goal, but, but again, my, my goal, our goal, is to get us back to pre-pandemic numbers where we're writing citations and we're making those interactions. That's important. Traffic, traffic stops are not just good for ticket count, which is not our goal, but it's good for interactions. We collect guns and drugs and all kinds of wanted subjects in traffic stops. That's your, that's your great filter.
Right.
Right? There's a lot of policing that happens through traffic enforcement.
Okay. And, and Peter, if it's, okay, I've, I have some information I'd like to share with the council.
Yeah, please do, Councilman. I know you sent it at nine o'clock last night, and Chief is reviewing it at six o'clock this morning. But please do. I was gonna, Chief has reviewed it, go ahead.
And this is, this is some information that, that I put together with the help of Denise Sudal, and I want to thank her for helping me with this, and I wanted to share this with the council. And so, you know, we get a lot of questions about, well, are we spending too much money on policing in this city? And, and so if we could bring up the first, which is a spreadsheet that we put together, and I'm just going to show one slide of that spreadsheet, so.
Cam should have it back. There we go.
Okay, here we go. Okay, if you'll go to the one, the bar chart. And this shows the, the number of traffic fatalities here in the city of Corpus Christi proper from, to scroll up and make that full page where everybody can see it. Hit F-five, I think will.
It's right up next to the X, right there. Yeah, no?
She needs to reduce the size of the image.
It should.
Okay, there you go. That's good. So, you know, go back down a little bit. Okay, so from twenty thirteen to current year, this is representative of the number of traffic fatalities here in Corpus Christi. And the lowest number you'll see was twenty, twenty traffic fatalities in twenty thirteen. That has now gone up above twenty-five, and we haven't had a year since then where we had less than twenty-five traffic fatalities in this city. And there's, you know, it's up one year, down the next year. You'll see in year twenty-twenty, it was probably one of the lower numbers, and that was primarily, I would assume, due to COVID and people not driving as much. But this shows the importance of having police officers on the streets and helping to hopefully turn this number around. Because if you add the numbers up from twenty fourteen to twenty-twenty-two, that's almost three hundred people who have died here in the city of Corpus Christi due to traffic accidents. And that's, you know, maybe that's not above average for a city our size, but it's three hundred families that have been impacted by what has happened on our streets, and we need to be cognizant of that. So if we could bring up the, the, close that one and bring up the next word file. This is information from the insurance industry, which covers from twenty twelve through twenty seventeen. This lists the number of accidents per one hundred thousand residents, or average across the state of Texas. And you'll see Dallas is number one. If you'll scroll down to number two. Yeah, yeah, go down. Okay. Well, we're having some IT problems, so.
I saw it, no, we're number five.
San Antonio is number two. Keep going. Fort Worth is number three. And Corpus Christi is number five. And these, these are the number of traffic fatalities per one hundred thousand. So just go back to the first page. Right, oh no. Jesus. Go to the one that shows Corpus Christi, please. Guess I should have come up here and practiced this. So this is, this is indicating that we have to continue to work on this, and for a city this size, we are well within our rights for doing what we're doing with adding police officers, and we need to, you know, you hear cities talking about defunding police. And Chief, I can't think what place we'd be in if we started cutting police officers rather than adding them. And this is not a list we want to be on. We even beat Houston, which was quite surprising to me, so. And again, I want to think about the number of families and, you know, children that are going to grow up without parents and parents who have buried children and those things. We just have to cut that number to as low as possibly can. And I don't know if any of you have noticed, and my kids say it's just the fact that I'm getting older, but when I get on Interstate thirty-seven to drive from my house to here, it's a racetrack. And if you're driving seventy-five miles an hour, which is the posted speed limit, you're an impediment to progress. And so, and, and that's true on a lot of our streets. And if, if the, if you can scroll over just a little bit, it will show the streets where in the city of Corpus, I thirty-seven, eleven, eleven traffic, traffic deaths associated with speed. And these are all speeding issues. These are numbers that were, they take, speeding was the cause of accidents. And there's a lot of things that can cause accidents. But Chief, I think you would agree that speeding is probably right up there at the top of the list. So, and Mayor, I know you're working with some individuals now on this very issue on Ocean Drive, so I just wanted to present these numbers in, in support of what we're doing with adding police officers. And to reach this fifty-five thousand is a lofty goal, Chief. I hope you get there. It probably ought to be more than that for a city this size.
Well, well, remember, we're still actualizing the numbers that, that you've given us. They're, they're not all on the street yet. It's going to take another year or so. And, and I can't, I can't disagree with you. How many times have y'all heard me say that we lose as many people to fatality, traffic accidents, as we do homicides? That's year after year. That's a real thing, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Pusley, thank you for this, for the data. It's very, very helpful and educational. You know, and it's so funny, you mentioned the speed limit, because you know what I did on purpose two days ago as I was driving home on two eighty-six? I went fifty-five. I said, you know what? I'm going to bring this down to fifty-five. I just want to see what it feels like, because we are programmed, and, and really, it's a state issue, right? The, the, the speed limit is what it is based on the state. But I literally went fifty-five, and it was, it was just unbelievable, because it was like people were just, even in the slow lane. People were going around. I mean, it's, it's, it's really a conscious effort. You don't have to drive, you know, seventy-five. But thank you for, for this. But thank you for, for this information, for bringing it forth. Um, Chief Markle, thank you for, um, your, your leadership. And, and I want to thank the council, because, um, for me, it's now been three councils that have really supported my vision of increasing the staffing of our police officers. And I'll never forget the workshop, the first ever, in the basement, where you said, here's what we need, here's the gap. Um, and, 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 you know, Peter came on and embraced that as well, so thank you. It's a group effort, and, and Councilman, you're absolutely right. Public safety is number one before anything else. No one, you know, economic development, um, you know, the growth, the families, the growth of, of, of our city as a whole, in any part of the city, it starts with how safe your city is. So, um, this is super important. You know, our initial plan was five in the next, uh, five, five sworn officers for the next five years each year. That is now going to be fifty-four sworn officers in the next five years. That's huge. And that makes a statement for what the priority is of this council and at least the past three or, I mean, more, I'm sure, but is where, you know, where it all began. So thanks for your leadership, and, and we really appreciate all these numbers. Very, very important that we, um, that we understand, you know, what it is you're dealing with. I, I have to commend, though, proactive policing. I know that's a top priority for the department, but that's what everybody wants to see. You know, to be able to see those police cars driving through the neighborhoods.
I agree.
Thank you, Chief Markle.
No further questions?
No. Uh, Mr. Zanoni?
Uh, Mayor, we just want to thank Scott Leighton as well for being here for my, uh, union.
There he is, our union president, yes. Association. It's not a union anymore.
I need to point out, before I leave, I need to point out that it takes a whole bush of, of firemen to my one pat.
And fires up.
I know it's obvious, but.
Thank you, Chief Markle. Pat, thank you.
So enhancement one is, uh, Pat comes over to the fire department.
Pat comes over. Enhancement.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Brandon Wade, Fire Chief, Corpus Christi Fire Department. And if I believe I have the clicker, is that correct? And we already went too fast. Okay. Uh, thank y'all very much for the opportunity to be here. And as y'all have spoken earlier, I'm very blessed to come to a city that does value their public safety. And, uh, it is very apparent, uh, coming from another agency in another place, that y'all do put a high value on your community as a whole, but really an investment in public safety. So thank you, and thank you for the opportunity again for being here. So when we look at this, uh, our mission statement for the fire department, prevention of fire, suppression of unwanted fires, protection of lives and property due to fire explosion, natural or man-made disasters, and to provide emergency medical services. We do this through our operations division, which, uh, obviously, we have seen in the past two weeks a number of fire incidents that we have responded to. We also have a large portion of our department that is responding to and handling many medical incidents every day, uh, with our, uh, ambulance crews. And as a picture here, we also have the Ambus, which is not just a asset here to the city, is a regional asset and an asset to the state. And we have provided help across the board directly from the city of Corpus Christi. We also have our technical, uh, response teams, which is our hazardous materials teams and our technical rescue, such as rope or confined space and trench and water. We have our prevention programs, which through our Fire Marshal's Office does handling inspections, both new inspections, uh, preventative inspections, and anytime calls and complaints come in at facilities, we go out to make sure that, that those buildings are safe for the people that are coming into the city or reside here. We also manage the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, we have that at located our fire headquarters. And as we know, that is a integral part in the preparation and ensure that coordination occurs whenever we have large-scale incidents or any natural disasters that is coming our way. A little bit about the fire department. We have eighteen fire stations. Uh, out of that, we have twenty-two frontline fire companies, fourteen medic units, and then again, the Emergency Operations Center that we operate. Here's a breakdown of the organization, the, uh, the command structure. Uh, obviously, right now, we have a vacancy at the deputy chief's position. We have, uh, posted that application to be open. We had four applicants apply for that. Uh, the applicants that can apply for the deputy chief position, per the CBA, is battalion chiefs and assistant chiefs. We'll be conducting interviews this week, and we'll be looking to make an appointment shortly thereafter uh, to fill that deputy chief role, which is a critical role in the organization to help with the budget preparation and management of the department as a whole. Some of the achievements that we had from this fiscal year that y'all allocated and, and was gracious to put that investment in the department. We opened up Medic Twelve up off Rand Morgan. We also added twenty-four firefighter positions, uh, in that class that was, uh, allocated with that is currently still in the cadet class. They would be scheduled to graduate in June of twenty twenty-four. We also purchased two aerial trucks. Uh, that is critical to the replacement of our fleet and keeping a fleet healthy. The aerial trucks, those are limited number of trucks that we have. We have five in the city. Uh, this is in line with our replacement plan. And, uh, as they're a specialized u- unit, as they have the, the ladder on top, keeping those, uh, in service is very important. We have purchased those. Those are about a year and a half build time, so we'll probably see those arrive somewhere around June of twenty twenty-four, as the fire industry across the board is experiencing about a eighteen-month build time for apparatus that used to be twelve months. So it does take a little bit for those, uh, aerial trucks to come in. We also graduated Cadet Class, uh, Forty-four that had thirty-one cadets. This brought the department to a full authorized strength. We had zero vacancies in the sworn position in the field upon their graduation in June. And then we have the Z-tron replacement. That is the replacement of the alerting system for our fire stations. That system was old and needed an update, and to ensure that the reliability that our folks are dispatched, uh, properly out in the field. We have worked with vendors, and now there should be something coming before council. I anticipate that this month, or at the end of this month, that y'all should see something with that, as we have worked with IT and working that contract out. Some of the performance measures you see here, the number of fire inspections, uh, for fire code, that is very important to every community. You, we try to do that with new construction, getting buildings open, uh, as businesses come in and new builds occur. We did have a drop, as you see, from the FY twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, where we're sitting, we're estimated to go to about three thousand five hundred. What we had in the Fire Marshal's Office, we did have two retirements. And those two retirements created a vacancy, which we then had to fill the vacancies with other uniformed personnel, send them to training, get their certifications to be a fire inspector. And all of that reduces the number of inspections that we're able to achieve. Also with that, we also had an injury within the office, so we had a firefighter that was out for over four months. That's another impact in the amount of inspections we could do. Even though we did have that reduction in the fire prevention office, we did not see any delays in the technical inspections, which would be new construction, new builds, and getting the fire marshals in those places inspected. So we anticipate with the Fire Marshal's Office being, uh, fully staffed again, that our numbers will go back up to that five thousand target.
Yeah, Chief, just to repeat that, so make sure people heard us, it didn't, did not impact new construction.
Did not impact new construction.
You met your metrics in terms of performance turnaround.
We were not a bottleneck in, in new construction and people getting the permits to open up their buildings. So that, that's always a concern with many cities, is with us trying to get the new construction going, and is what I refer to as the technical inspections. We did not have a bottleneck or, or hold that up with it, so. Okay. Our number of structure fire calls you see here, in twenty-two, we had three hundred and twenty. We're anticipating roughly around three hundred and nineteen. And while no one wants a target of three hundred and twenty-six, if we're looking at the trends that we've seen in the past number of years, that's where we're coming up with probably seeing around three hundred and twenty-six structure fires. We would love to reduce that even more and more, because no one wants a high target of, uh, structure fires in their community, but it gives you a reflection of the number of incidents that we do have with fires.
And Chief Wade, is that all across, how does that three hundred and twenty, or three hundred and nineteen spread across the city? And I know you, you might not be able to answer that now, but I guess you've got that data.
Yeah, we, we could pull that data. I do not have that data in front of me where they're concentrated at. We can definitely pull the data to see kind of what we would refer to as a heat map where those are occurring. Uh, so we could pull that for you and, and provide that to council.
And who responded? You know, because I think that changes too, correct? Who responds to the fire, depending on?
As in stations?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, de- depending on, we dispatch by closest unit, uh, for the incident, so that would impact the stations that are near the, where those fire incidents happen.
I would, I would like that information too, just to know.
We'll definitely get that to you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Klein, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I, I may be jumping the gun here. Um, the structure fighter calls, uh, and then EMS as well, um, do we have a sense of how our city compares to others? Uh, either in Texas, I guess, or beyond? Uh, are we typical? Are we high? Are we low?
I think we're rolling about typical with what I've seen from where I have come from, but we'd have to pull that data to see if we're high or low. We are a busy metropolitan city for, for incidents. Again, you have to base that on the number of fire stations to, and apparatus that are responding to the incidents and put that ratio together. So we'd have to pull that data in, in reflect that.
Do they usually measure structural fires? Do they measure that per capita, per person, the population, or is it more so by structures, I guess, in the city?
No, I've never seen it by structure per city. Usually, they do it by population when you look at it. And a lot of times, they break cities down across the fire service within population, as in the most populous, and then what's the call volume with that? Because you may have some communities that have a, uh, high population, but they may have lower number of structure fires, but it's a lot of new construction.
Right.
So new fire codes, maybe they have more sprinkler systems because it's newer construction. So there's a lot of variables that play into that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. With the number of EMS calls, we have consistently risen, just like many other agencies across the city, I mean, across the nation. Uh, we have seen from forty-two thousand four hundred, this year, we're estimated to go forty-two thousand eight hundred. And then if we continue to trend, which is about a one percent to almost two percent increase in the years, we're looking at roughly forty-three thousand medical incidents next year. Our number of transports have also increased with that. And as you know, we've put in an additional medic unit in the field to help assist with that, but we will continue to probably see the, the increase in transport and EMS runs. And that has been, um, a trend across the fire industry, uh, that we have seen and every community has been facing. And then our total calls going up from fifty-six thousand one hundred up to fifty-six thousand seven hundred. And again, based on the past trends, we're looking at a fifty-seven thousand nine hundred for next fiscal year.
Councilman Roy, do you have a question?
If you could go back to the last slide, it's, oh, I'm sorry, just, we stay right here on this one. The number of structure fire calls, do we have a breakdown between the number of residential structure fires and commercial?
We can get that. Yes, sir.
And the only reason why I'm asking that is, is that, you know, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think that when you take a look at a commercial fire, usually, the issues or what caused that, in many cases, is different than a residential fire, you know? Somebody cooking and they spill grease on their foot. All right, I had to do that. But, you know, uh, those reasons, as, you know, as, uh,
That's your, your.
Commercial fire could be a lot more different in terms of the accident or the scope and that.
You could. You could see a difference with commercial fires. A lot of times, it has to do with processes. Um, it could be, you know, oil that is heated up. It could be machinery that's occurred. There's probably still some level of human interaction that can happen at a commercial fires. Um, you could see somebody discard a cigarette back in the warehouse area where there's boxes. That could occur. A lot of times, um, depending on the age of the buildings, a lot of commercial occupancies are sprinkled, and they can have a reduced, uh, impact or severity of the fire. But it all, again, depends on age and under the fire code when it was built. Whereas residential, many times, you see just a kind of straight human error on it and less mechanical, uh, issues or failures that caused a fire.
And, and then with our heat and our issues that we have right now with just being dry out there, um, I, I don't know if the numbers in terms of brush fires, which can lead, lead to structural fires, I don't know if we have, is that part of that three twenty-six?
No, this is strictly structure fire. So, but if a brush fire extended into a structure, then that would trigger where it is a structure fire in the reporting system. So that's one of the concerns, as we get drier and drier, and you have fires in grasslands or the brush. One of the key priorities that the incident commanders and the units that first get on scene is trying to determine if there's going to be any exposures, which is structures that are threatened based on this grassland, wildland fires. And we try to immediately start protecting the exposures, which would be the structures that are threatened. But we, we would have to break some more data down to see all of the difference between the residential and the commercial, but we can definitely pull that.
Do, do you think that we have adequate city coverage overall, or is there a particular area within the city that, you know, you think, um, is underserved more than another one, based on a geographic location?
I, I haven't looked specifically in the geographical location. I have, uh, we asked for some, I asked for some response maps, and based on what I saw, and we'll get into it on the next slide, we have really good coverage, what I think, but it doesn't mean that there isn't gap somewhere. And I'd have to go back specifically and, and pull that data and, and build something for y'all, and, and we can discuss it. But we have good response times. And as you'll see, again, on the next slide, is when we're comparing what our response time is and, and trying to achieve, uh, an arrival time of under eight minutes. We're doing very well, as we're almost making it to all of our incidents under, uh, under eight minutes ninety percent of the time. And that is from the time that the call goes to MetroCom, to call processing, dispatch, turnout time and travel time. We, we have good times on that.
Thank you.
Okay, this is where we can look at, uh, this other page of performance measures. This is something that I asked for to be added, because it starts to measure what is our effectiveness of your fire department that's responding into the community. One of the things to measure when you're looking at fires is, are we confining the fire to the room of origin? And that's important, because once fire starts breaking out of the room of origin, that's where you can see an increase in injuries, not only to the civilian but firefighters, but also you traditionally see an increase in the potential for fire fatalities. So in FY twenty-twenty-two, we were at about forty-five percent. FY twenty-three, we're looking to trend where we have keeping the fire confined to the room of origin roughly around fifty-one percent. Since we have not put a targeted goal ever on this before, that's, we're looking for at least a forty-eight percent, um, confining a fire to the room of origin, which I would like to see how we can improve and see if we can continue to increase that where we're confining the, the fire. And that will also show, are we putting our resources in the right place and, and getting to the scene of the emergency with effective operations? So that'll kind of address some of that as we really start to look at that performance measure. Looking at the return of spontaneous circulation, this is a pretty impressive, um, performance measure, I believe, that we have as an agency. That is, um, going to CPR calls where someone is pulseless, and we're arriving on scene. And due to effective measures that our paramedics are, uh, doing on the patient to see pa- a positive patient outcomes. So we're trending this year roughly to be around thirty-five percent of return of, uh, circulation. And that's from the time of us getting on scene, implementing medical procedures, and then arrival at the hospital. So we're giving the citizens some of the best chances in survival when we're going to cardiac arrest incidents. The FY twenty-four target, that thirty-one point five percent, that's roughly your national average. So right now, we're showing that we're above the national average in returning pulses into patients in our community, which is a great place to be at. And, uh, we will continue to monitor that to see how we're trending and, uh, even if we can improve it. So this is a great one to have.
And Chief, we, uh, elaborate a little bit, you're basically bringing a person back to life.
We are bringing a person back to life with pulses and putting them in the emergency room. From that point, we, as the fire department, really don't have any more control over the patient care once they go into the emergency room. But we're giving them the best chance at survival for bringing somebody back with pulses and delivering them to an emergency room.
So it's thirty-five, uh, thirty-five point nine seven percent. What, what is, what would the goal be?
Well, that's why we're looking at the target for twenty-four, the national average, when you look at it, is roughly thirty-one percent. So we're over four percent higher, uh, than the national average right now of getting pulses back on a patient that we respond to.
Wow, that's interesting. These are very interesting.
That's a pretty impressive measure.
It really is. It really is. Thank you for sharing this page. Councilman Pusley.
All right, I just have a quick question. So I get asked this all the time, please don't laugh. When, when an EMS vehicle goes out for an incident like this, they always send a fire truck behind it.
Yes.
Can you explain why?
Yes, CPR is a completely taxing event. If you're looking at doing good CPR, you need personnel on scene to continue compressions, ventilations. And traditionally in the old days, there, it was a badge of honor of how good one person could do CPR for as long as possible. What the trends and data has shown, you get exhausted doing CPR, your CPR is less effective. By sending the fire truck with it, you have the ability with a true team to not only do CPR, rotate who's doing CPR, so we continue adequate compressions, ventilations. And then you also have paramedics, where all of our folks are paramedics, but you also have individuals that are pushing the drugs to help bring that person back to life. So it truly takes a team to do a CPR cardiac arrest call. That's why that truck goes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Chief, and you weren't here, but last year we allotted funding for Lucas devices. And so did all our EMS units get the Lucas device? And if so, why, I mean, if that's going to be in place, would you still need additional people if that's, if we allotted money for that?
So-
And explain what a Lucas device is.
Yeah, Lucas device is a machine that does the compressions. You can put it on the person that does the compressions in lieu of a person doing compressions. And I will have to turn over here, did we put all the Lucas devices on the units?
All of our medic units have them.
So all the medic units have Lucas devices. It came from a department that had Lucas devices. We still needed a four-person fire unit and a two-person medic unit and even an EMS commander to show up on a cardiac arrest call when we had a Lucas device. You still have to apply the device. You still have to make sure it's situated right. All patients are different in shapes and sizes. Sometimes they don't fit on them. They don't fit on a, you're not supposed to put them on a small child. So you still need the personnel to make sure the device is applied. It is doing its job and devices fail. And the last thing we want is a device to fail and we don't have the team in place to continue compressions on an individual. Is, that's one of the most important things is keeping constant compressions on it. Plus, not all cardiac arrests happen on the first floor where they can easily be moved. There's many times we're taking patients down multiple flights of stairs to get them into the medic unit. So that team is critical and I would advocate every day to continue to send a fire truck and a medic unit to the incident.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Below the return of spontaneous circulation, you'll see this is another one that I wanted to have y'all look at. It better defines what our response times are. And that is the percentage of time we're making our incidents under eight minutes. And you can see the both percentages for fire calls. A lot of agencies will look at it trying to have that ninety percent of the time we're arriving at an incident under eight minutes. And that is total call time, again, from the time the person calls nine-one-one and you get a timestamp to the first unit getting on scene. And right now, when you look at it, that's pretty impressive coverage. I don't know if that's because everybody drives faster on here, so we just flow in the traffic with them. But we are making good time to our incident. So that is another good, good measure for us to look at that. Because it also shows that our call processing at MetroCom is occurring at a good rate. If some places, they have had high vacancies in their dispatching center, which has increased not only call answering time from almost two minutes, but also the processing time has been increased and that affects us getting to that emergency at a good time. So that number is reflected there in the performance measure.
Chief Wade, and is that the, what's the national standard, I guess? Is it eight or is it five or is it something?
So there's a couple of things. There's NFPA seventeen-ten-
Right.
Uh, for response, they do have a standard that they say fire departments should meet. There's been some papers on that that's kind of now said it's an unrealistic expectation, but it's roughly about five minutes, twenty seconds. But that's only the response time. It does not calculate the call-taking time, the processing time. So when you look at the five minutes and twenty seconds, you're only getting a small snapshot of when the tone goes off at the station, the firefighter's going in the truck and then a response. It's not taking the total. So if somebody saw the five-minute response time as this average, that's not, that's not quite adequate. I would say accurate. If they think it's always going to arrive in five minutes, there's still a whole processing time before that. So that's why we're looking at this one as well.
And this one includes the whole process?
This includes the whole process.
Not the minute it leaves the station, they leave the station? Okay.
Yes.
That makes sense, because then that would be lower in fairness, right?
Yes, we'd be in the five-minute mark, right around there. Just, again, that only captures a piece of it, I think. It's important for us to look at all of it.
That it should reflect when you leave the station?
It's got to reflect all of it.
You feel like it should reflect from the beginning to the end?
Absolutely, because if, if we're not answering the nine-one-one call in the right, you know, in a sufficient time, that impacts the overall response. If we're, the call-takers are not processing the nine-one-one call in a timely manner, that impact, like, that impacts the overall time. So to really look at, is your emergency service arriving to the scene of an incident? When one of our, the public calls nine-one-one, we need to look at the whole picture and not just a piece. Because if I showed you just the turnout time of how fast our firefighters run to the truck, that's only a piece of it. We still got to look at the travel time, but we have to look at the before time when that nine-one-one call comes in. Because one of the first things we always hear on an incident is what took you so long? Because they're expecting when they call nine-one-one, things are happening.
Right.
And we want to accurately reflect that.
Right, understood. Councilman Suckley.
Uh, thanks, Chief. With respect to the eight-minute that we're talking about, is that data available per station, per medic that you could share with us at a later, later time?
Yeah, we'd have to like really dial down in. I bet, I bet we could grab that.
Okay, that'd be great to share with us at some point if, if you guys could.
Okay.
And I apologize, I've had a question written down here since you got started and I probably should have asked at the beginning. But with you now being here for two and a half months or whatever it is, I'm curious, as you talk through the budget, if there's things that as you've been here, you've seen that kind of holistically, you've gotten in and seen, you know, we're lacking this resource or we could reallocate this person to do this or we could eliminate this task. If there's things like that that are accompanied here, I'd be happy, I'd be happy if you'd share that with us.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes. All right, looking at the twenty-twenty-four Fire Department proposed budget, you can see that we have roughly about, in the twenty-three, we had seventy-nine point five million. And in the proposed budget going into twenty-twenty-four, we're looking at roughly eighty point one million with a change of about six hundred thousand, almost seven hundred thousand. You can see how the, the funding for the department's budget, we're mainly made up with a general fund of seventy-nine million. We have the LEPC that is about two hundred thousand dollars and then some grant funding that is in there that is at the nine hundred thousand range. Not all of that grant funding at the nine hundred thousand is specifically fire. We also manage some of the, the state grants that go down in collaboration with the police. So one of our grant managers manages that, but the way it comes in, it does reflect into that nine hundred thousand. But that's not total grant for the fire department. For the sworn positions, we are sitting currently at four hundred and forty-six. With this proposed budget, we're looking to move to four hundred and fifty-five. And then with the civilians, we are looking to add two more civilian positions to our staff to help us achieve just the, the basic operations for the organization.
Chief Wade, question. So who handles all your, you know, we have a, I assume you have a PAT and we're joking about it.
Currently, that position has been vacant since my arrival. So my PAT position has been vacant, my deputy chief position has been vacant. So it has been a big kudos to the team here and working definitely with the, the budget office has been a big help to get us to where we're at today with those two positions vacant.
So, okay, prior to though, you have almost a million in grants, correct?
We're close to a million in grants. Not all of that is fire department grants. Some of it is, the way some of the grants come in through the COG, it goes through, like, we have about forty-four thousand dollars in grants that we have for some command training. But then there's some additional grants that does go to the law enforcement-
Right.
Uh, under the funds for LETA and stuff that they have to be dedicated to it. It just, the way it funnels through, it kind of funnels through the department managing it with our grant administrator.
So I guess my question is, is, you know, do you feel that you're taking advantage or able to of grants that come in?
So I asked our grant administrator to start searching for every grant out there that could benefit the fire EMS, emergency operations, any of that, that stuff. So she is actively looking to pull all grants that are out there that we may be eligible to apply and for and then look at what the budget impact would be and work with the city manager and deputy city manager on submittal for those grants. Because not all grants are free.
Right.
Some of them with the matching funds. So I mean, that's something that always has to be taken into account. So we are actively searching. That's one of the tasks I gave to our grant administrator.
Good. I'd like to, you know, to see an increase in grants. And I know you've got to have the staff to do it and, you know, the situation is what it is today. But it seems like there would be, seems like there would be more, you know, available that we could take advantage of. Of course, you need the staffing to do it. So good. I'm glad to hear that.
We're working on that.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, looking at the twenty-twenty-four proposed general fund budget, you can see on the outer ring, that is where the funding is at. We have, the majority of it obviously is the general fund resources. We have about nine point six million is what we're estimating for next year through the transport and the billing for EMS billing. We're anticipating again about nine point six million and that is a slight increase of what we are estimated at collecting this year. We have the fees, about nine hundred thousand dollars in fees. And that's everything from fire marshal permits, ambulance fees, hydrant maintenance, things like that that we get. And then we also have, we're estimating about two million in the task funds for the ambulance supplemental payment program. And then in the, the core of that, you'll see the personnel costs, the operating, and then where our allocations in our capital budget is in the core for that, how it'll be spent and broken down.
That's great. And I have to bring up task. So that is moving along strong, two million. And we're averaging two million, I think. Is that right?
It has been roughly two million is based on what I've been told, what we're anticipating. A lot of that is, I've grown to have a better understanding. The cities and the state are all applying for that. So it kind of matters how many folks are putting in for and what their piece is going to be that they'll cut. So we're hoping like San Antonio and Houston forget to apply for.
Exactly. They're, they're real busy. But I want to come in because Chief, this is a perfect example of what never was. And, and our department went out and found this on their own, brought it in. And so it was, you know, I mean, two million bucks is a big deal.
Absolutely, absolutely. It is a big help.
It is. Thank you.
So we also manage the LEPC. That is a local emergency planning committee. And that is, again, on the outer ring, the funding for that, you'll see it is all funded through the contributions and donations through a little bit from the fire departments and the county. And then of course, industry partners that are all part of the LEPC. It's a federally mandated but unfunded program. So everything with it is donations and contributions as part as making sure that the community is aware of the chemicals and hazards that are, that are locally in there. So there's the funding for that. And then the, the enters where it's spent with about forty-five percent on our LEPC coordinator. And then there's a temp position that we'll have. And then the allocations that go for the reverse alert and then our operating expenses where we're doing shelter and place kits and whatnot that go out to the schools. A lot of times when schools come back, they're requesting shelter and place kits and we provide that for them.
Yeah, Chief, can you talk a little bit more about it to, not to compare it necessarily where you came from, but that's a good example where they didn't really have a strong LEPC budget at all.
Yes, uh, every county is supposed to have an LEPC. That's not always the case. They may have one in theory that maybe they meet once a year if they meet. And I've seen it where there's not much participation on all parties in an LEPC. And then coming here to the city of Corpus Christi, it is one of the strongest LEPCs, I'd say, in the state. And we actually not only have other LEPCs around the state that are contacting us about how it's set up, we've even had some contact from out of state. So it's a very well-run, it's a great partnership and it allows us to build the relationships whenever we have incidents or response or just training. We've also, a lot of training can come from there with it. So it's a, it's a very ran, well-run program. And thank you to our LEPC coordinator for doing that. She's a big part of it.
Right.
Yes.
I'm on that board and it's impressive. They're very active. Our leadership over there is very active, especially in the education and awareness of what they do.
Yes, absolutely. So as we start moving into enhancement, while this is something that the city is doing where we're increasing the contributions as part of, I believe, a five-year plan that was set up a number of years ago for the Corpus Christi firefighters retirement system, so that the funding is trying to get more in line where the TMRS is. The contribution has increased in the last four fiscal years. And again, the proposed increase for this fiscal year is going to be point nine eight four percent. You can see the chart right there down below, the bullet points about how it has increased and then what it'll show that is the percentage by the end of the proposed twenty-twenty-four. So any questions on that?
Uh, Councilman Klein?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Actually, I had a question from a couple of pages earlier. Maybe I could talk to you some other time about this yet as well. I was thinking about the, the fires you're responding to. Do you have a sense of what is leading cause or common, most common cause or causes of fires?
Yeah, I, I can't comment on that right now until I get our investigators and pull the number. I wouldn't be able to say, but we can pull that for you.
And I was noticing as well on, this is again on page twenty-eight, you're looking at the number of transports, twenty-six thousand, a little over twenty-six thousand estimated now for this year in twenty-twenty-three. That's for residents, people living within the city. But do you do transports from the refineries as well? It's my impression that you do, but I don't know that for certain.
Yes, we're the only emergency transport agency here. So some of that is even going into the county when there's requests and we still do billing. And then also if we do go into a refinery, if they call nine-one-one for somebody with chest pain, we go. But we also do billing as well to that person and like I said, insurance and whatnot. So we do respond everywhere around here.
Yeah, you said you're the only one that are doing transports of the refiners, I guess, or not then?
No, sir. I am not aware of any transport resources that any refinery has.
Right, and Chief, we just visited the mayor and I, Michael and you, actually you as well, visited the RTFC, the Terminal Fire Company, but they don't have any EMS staff or EMS devices, right?
They, they, they can be trained and I don't know all of their training level for if they're emergency metal technicians basics. Maybe they have paramedics, but they don't have transport services for medical incidents. They are, they are more of a fire response. First aid, maybe they do it, but they're, if there's a transport that needs to occur, Corpus Christi Fire Department responds and provides a transport for patients.
Do any of the ESDs have transport capability?
They do.
Yeah, and Councilman Wade, I, I mean, Councilman, Chief Wade, I'm sorry.
Promotion!
Downgraded you, sorry. Sorry about that. No, you, you, you know, back to, to your, to the, the retirement system.
Yes.
This is, I, I just want to underscore the importance of this. This is such a big feat. This is a huge stride forward. Four years ago roughly, we had this conversation, Peter and I had this conversation because, you know, our retirees, you know, they've devoted and dedicated their lives and retired from the city of Corpus Christi. They had not had an increase, you know, in benefits. Peter created a task force. That task force was tasked with making the pension sound, which they did. So today, what's proposed is increasing those benefits by roughly a hundred and ten dollars a month. And that is huge. Councilman, but I don't, you remember, Cefevolenzuela was one who was very, you know, vocal about that. And so those are conversations we've been having for some years now, Peter. So thank you for moving that task force forward and just to the team that is making this happen.
Absolutely.
This is a huge impact on our retirees' lives who have dedicated their lives to the Corpus Christi Fire Department. So I'm very, very excited about this and I just want to make sure that we, we all understand that, what this really means. You talk about impacting lives for our retirees. They deserve this and we're very happy about, about this proposed.
It, it truly does. And this one is just the straight contribution. And you'll see later in the enhancement where it talks about the coal is that we'll go to the retirees and- And you'll see later in the enhancement where it talks about the coal is that will go to the retirees and.
I'm ahead of myself.
You're fast. You've got it down. So, but a big piece is you're speaking to that. When we're looking at hiring and recruiting and getting a great workforce, retirement is a big piece of it. And you will see firefighters looking at agencies across the state of who has good benefits, who has a good retirement. So keeping that sound also helps us recruit and, and, uh, retain a great workforce that we have. Thank you for those comments, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Here.
Councilman, but I guess.
I, I just wanted to back up on the, you, you had mentioned about the emergency transport for, uh, for refineries. How, just how often do we, have we, how many calls do we have?
I'd have to pull those numbers. I don't have the exact numbers of how often we're going into those, but we could pull that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So looking at enhancement one, uh, this is for our forty-six fire academy. Uh, anticipating hiring nineteen cadets that will cover our attrition. We're looking at an attrition rate of either retirements or resignations of about nineteen a year. So that should cover our anticipated vacancies just based on attrition. Again, the cadet class is ran at the Delmar College in partnership with them. Uh, while they handle the curriculum and the instruction, the fire department does manage our cadets that are there uh, in, in all things over the cadets, while Delmar does help with the instruction and the building of the curriculum.
Excuse me, Councilman Suckley, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I got my light on late. Uh, back to support, uh, of other institutions. The refineries have their own fire department, RTFC.
Some. I do not know who, if they contract with all the refineries, but I do know they contract with a number of them.
Okay. So if they have a fire at a refinery, do, does the city of Corpus Christi send units?
The city of Corpus Christi doesn't go onto their property unless requested, since they have a fire response, uh, force on those. What we do is respond to outside, what we would say is the fence line, and we do direct monitoring for air quality. And then if we, and we also put, um, a person inside their EOC, their operation. So we have some level of, of what's going on as we're doing the air monitoring. And again, because of the medical component, we can also address any of that. If we're requested to go in, then at the time, our, one of our chief officers would, um, evaluate that request to determine if we can help them with whatever they're asking. But currently, we would respond outside the fence line for direct air monitoring.
Okay. If we had to go inside, Peter, do we get reimbursed for that?
No, we don't, Councilman.
Okay.
We don't. In the, in the five years I've been here, there's been numerous incidences where we've responded to every event. Whether it was the explosion on the ship channel, the most recent, uh, fire at the Valero refinery. We attend them all as a backup.
Yep.
Which we're proud to do, uh, but we don't get reimbursed for it.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Now, Peter, we just put in a policy last year to address stuff that's outside the city limits to charge, uh, fire incidents or responses. So why wouldn't this apply to industry if they're outside the city limits? Why wouldn't we charge them similar to how we create? I mean, why did we create that policy if we're not going to charge people outside the city limits?
You know what? That's a good, that's a good question, a good, uh, good point, Councilman. You're the one that recommended we look at that. I, we have to look to see if it was just structural fires or industrial plant fires. Let us look at the, at the ordinance.
Okay, the, the reason, the whole reason we did that is because there's areas that we were responding to.
You're right.
Uh, because they weren't covered by an ESD and we had this agreement with the county, but we had, there was no reimbursement for those, for those trips.
Yeah, correct.
So if we have, uh, that aspect with anything outside the city limits that don't pay city taxes for, uh, fire service, they should be charged for any of our services.
Right, that's a good point. Up to this point, in my mind, it was just structural, like a housing, like a house fire, but good point. So our recent work that we did at one of the refineries, we could look at that because that ordinance is in place.
Right. And then, you know, for medical, uh, responses, we charge our own citizens for, for those.
Right.
Uh.
Well, and for that, we would be billing the patient anyway, just, just like.
But this is for fire service.
But if there's something, fire service, we'll have to look, see what the fee schedule is and what it applies to, and then how we would assess that charge, because there's always a process that has to be put in place for someone to pay those fees.
Right. I would, I would imagine if we're just outside the fence line, we don't actually provide any service. It's hard to charge anybody.
Right, so.
But if they're, if you actually provide some service, some manpower, then you, you'd have a mechanism to charge. And we put that in place last year.
Yeah, you're right, Councilman.
Thank you.
We'll get, Council, uh, we'll get Chief Wade up to speed on it.
Absolutely. We'll look into that and, and start evaluating it.
Thank you.
Yep. So for enhancement two, we're looking to increase the.
One, one more follow-up going back. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, so when you say we go to the fence line when there's a fire, what do we send to the fence line? Fire trucks, EMS, or all of the above?
All of the above. So our hazardous materials units are going there because they're the ones that are conducting their air monitoring. They'll do plume modeling to see, because smoke doesn't stay where it's produced, that's for sure. So when we look at the plume modeling of where we believe that the smoke is traveling from, say, a fire, like, we haven't been to one, I don't, don't think recently for just a straight chemical release, but it has been fires since I've been here. We'll look at the plume modeling and then we go out and we do air monitoring to see if any community actions need to take place uh, based on what the findings are of the air monitoring.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Hernandez. We, uh, we, we need to look at that, Peter. I mean, just sending people to the fence line is a cost.
Right, well, we go, right, exactly. We're going to pull that policy up. We do have a new chief. And, uh, again, my, when we wrote it, it was, uh, we had contemplated structural home fires.
Yeah, we were thinking about residential homes.
But it's a real good point, because they send a massive amount of, of resources to a industrial partner.
Yeah, it will, it, I don't want to get too in-depth with that, but there is a difference between going to a fence line, probably in air monitoring, than direct actions. Uh, it would be no difference if there was a fire in a county next door over and they haven't requested our help, but we put some units on our side of the city, the limits to make sure nothing comes into ours. We may not have provided any assistance to that, but we responded units to make sure that nothing was going to come into the city. So, uh, I would be interested in looking at and, and we'll start reviewing that policy.
That's costing us money.
Right.
It does.
That's a very good point.
And us as the taxpayer.
Us as the taxpayer, absolutely, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So enhancement two is looking to increase our authorized strength with nine more, uh, FTEs with firefighters. Again, that continues to work towards the goal of four-person staffing, which is recommended and is a best practice with fire departments across the country. Currently, we have six apparatus that are four-person staff. This would again, help us push, uh, up to eight. And this is part of the five-year plan to transition all of our twenty-two frontline fire companies to four-person staffing. So, um, this is a definite need. And again, to, to, you will, we, we will see a greater impact on efficiency and effectiveness of our operations as we continue to work towards that four-person staffing. Enhancement three is, uh, one of the civilian positions, which is an EMS billing supervisor. Currently, uh, as we sit and collect roughly this year will be, uh, estimated nine point two million dollars. And for next fiscal year being nine point six, having a dedicated person to, uh, oversee the billing is essential to that operation as, as the, the amount of money coming in is increasing. It also helps support that growth. It improves the efficiency. And a big part of it is that when we get the questions, uh, from our public that are getting billed for the EMS response, we're able to answer questions timely, make sure we have accurate billing for that. So this is a critical piece that we need to really work for and, and having a, uh, a dedicated person to EMS billing is important to the mission of our fire and EMS system.
And Councilman Suckley, this is a good example of, uh, Chief Wade coming in and analyzing the operations. Uh, so this position will more than pay for itself.
Yeah.
Um, right. We're adding another position to recruit more of our billing, um, to be at a higher percentage collection.
Just a one percent increase would almost, the efficiency of billing could, would pay for this position. And again, right now, we have a uniform position, uh, that has been doing that. And with one of our assistant chiefs amongst the many other things that they're trying to do and trying to build some efficiency. Uh, this is a great place to put a civilian position in our department to help us focus on this EMS billing. Again, it, it can assist with getting our funding back, but it also, for the customers, for the citizens that are having to go through the billing, and, and that can be a difficult task for anybody to navigate. Yes. Enhancement four is looking to convert, uh, currently we have a temporary position. We're looking to convert that to a deputy emergency management coordinator. We all know Billy. Billy's given a number of presentations. And right now, uh, there is a lot of focus on, uh, on Billy and all the work that he does. He, it's amazing. He is so, you know, looks, um, poised with everything that is thrown upon him of, of trying to do trainings in the public, excuse me, to preparedness. And then whenever an incident does occur, trying to lead and coordinate the, uh, emergency management center. So this is a great enhancement for this division, for the, the EOC, having a deputy emergency manager. It also helps with succession planning. As this position not only can potentially give Billy a little bit break from being on twenty-four-seven, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, it gives us another person qualified out there to assist the community with training and preparedness and coordinate efforts with, between departments in the city. Enhancement five is replacing three medic units with three frontline medic units that, uh, are well-aged out. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and a two thousand thirteen model that we're trying to get rid of. All with over two hundred very hard thousand miles on it. So this is in line with our replacement plan that we really need to, um, put those to auction and get new, three new medic units in to continue a reliable fleet that can respond out to the emergencies that were called to. Enhancement six is replacing one of our fire, uh, engines. Again, at roughly about one point two million dollars, we're seeing the cost of those apparatus increase across the fire, uh, service, no matter which vendor that you're going with. They all have increased their cost. And again, the lead time to, to order one and get one in is about eighteen months. So if, when there are delays and people trying to, um, keep their fleet up, those delays can increase and increase as we see that. So this is in line with our department plan. We try to replace our engine companies. We try to put, uh, an engine company goes for ten years on the front line and then five years in a reserve status. And then we try to get rid of them roughly in fifteen years. The engine that we're trying to get off the line right now is a two thousand four model. So it's a little bit past that time. But council and, and, uh, the city manager has invested in the past years of trying to bring our fleet up to a very healthy status and, and trying to get rid of some of those old trucks that just continue to break down.
Right. And Mayor and Council, um, we, in the past four budgets, uh, with this fifth one here, we have done tremendous amount of investment in trying to catch up in the fire pumppers or ladders. Once you run behind, it's tough to get caught up. Uh, these things age and they become unreliable. The chief did ask for two. Uh, we put one in the budget initially, but we'll see how things, uh, uh, come out with our property tax. So I told the chief in our budget preparation meeting, uh, if funds are available based on property tax, the final, you know, we only had the preliminary role, uh, the certified role did come in. We're working through the numbers now, but if there's, uh, one-time monies or property tax revenues above what we thought, uh, we may recommend to council through this six-week process, an additional, uh, fire engine to keep up, because there's still several more that need to be replaced.
There's still several more that go out, and, and the repair costs just continue to increase from, uh, I think we may see on the outside vendors, an increase from a hundred thirty dollars now to a hundred and eighty. So the healthier you can get your fleet and it's not sitting in the shops breaking down, it, it saves the city money.
It saves taxpayer money.
Right, absolutely. What is our oldest, oldest truck?
Right now, we're looking at the oh-four of trying to get out. And, and the other one, I, I can't think of what the second one is. It's too many numbers are in my head, but probably an oh-five, oh-six, I would imagine if, as we're getting rid of oh-four.
And the task monies, are those staying with the fire department?
They are, yes. So we budgeted two million in the budget for fire department. Uh, but the final check comes in like in that October timeframe. So if additional comes in above the two million, we would do what we've done in the past, recommend some additional fire enhancements to keep it within the fire department.
I completely agree with that opinion.
But those, that two million dollars though, Peter, so it was never part of the, the operating budget. It didn't exist, remember? Okay, so then it comes in, never had it. And, and are we now using that for operating? Because you're saying over.
We are, so like.
Like two million was over.
Yeah. So this, uh, medic units, one point three million, the fire engines, one point two million.
It's coming from.
Yeah, so you could say, you know, two point five million, we, we're overspend. We're spending more than the task allotment right now on one-time improvements, because that task money, even though it has been annually.
You've got to do this one-time.
We're making significant investment in the fire department. Um, but we want to continue to look at these revenues between now and the adoption. So if there is additional money, we, we made a, I wanted to put, let the council know, we probably should look at an additional fire engine for the fire department.
Right.
Because in the end, as the chief said, when they're, when it's an older device, it's in the shop more, and it's just not a good use of taxpayer money at that point.
No, I agree. I agree. But I guess what I'd like to see and what seems to be fair would be that task money should be one-time capital investment expenditures.
Yes.
And not into the oper, I mean, we have an operating budget. That should be separate and, and for what you need, you're right.
Yes. If you put it in, if you just put it in straight operating cost to cover personnel, next year.
Right.
It could be one million that you get into it, you know? Where, where we don't anticipate that, but you're right. It, it's the one year. I think y'all have been doing that every time, is using it as one-time.
Yeah, we have, recall last year, there was a prioritized list, and we actually, because the check came in a little bit less, we drew, we had to draw the line, but they have a prioritized list of one-time capital needs, whether it's to benefit firefighters themselves or equipment or tools, right?
Yeah. And I just want to make sure it stays that way.
Yeah, well.
Because before it did get used elsewhere.
Right, that's a good point.
And health insurance.
Just for the record, so the, the new council members, in the past, the council allocated that towards other departments, not the fire department.
Right.
So since Mayor Warado's been on the council, there's been an effort, and Councilman Hunter as well.
Stays with you, Wade. It stays with you.
Thank you. I agree.
Right. We support that.
Uh, Councilman Suckley, or Pusley, and then Suckley, sorry.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So if we ordered a fire truck today, how long would it take to get it?
Approximately eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
Other reason we want to be mindful of this.
Yeah, I was going to say, if, if we're getting to the point where we've got one that's.
That's right.
You know, we're having to crank the engine to get it going, we, we better.
That is what we, that is what we don't, that is what we do not want, right? We, we want our, our fleet to be able to get the firefighters and the paramedics, the EMS to the incident reliable and not have to say, we're broke down on the side of the road. That, that is not what we want to do. So the health of the fleet is very important, uh, and we continue to work towards that.
Okay. And I want to go back, just if I could, uh, real quickly, Mayor, to the, the conversation we had a minute ago about the, the ordinance that we put in, uh, a year ago, uh, with respect to, and that dealt with people who live outside the city limits when we make EMS calls or fire calls or whatever. We would, you know, and, and your new billing person, I would assume, would certainly help with that as well.
That would be another role that we could put in. We're primary in just the amount of revenue that's coming in from EMS billing. That is a huge focus, but we would definitely look at the other duties as assigned. And, and it could be for even, not only the, the billing such as that for outside city limits fire responses, but it could also even be hazmat billing when we go out, because we do have the type one hazmat team that is requested at times for mutual aid to handle incidents.
So if, if someone inside the city limits, a taxpayer that lives inside the city of Corpus Christi ha, has a need for an EMS transport, do they get charged as well?
They get billed, yes. We send the bill, and oftentimes it will go to their insurance i, if they have insurance to.
If they don't have insurance, then what do they do?
I'm going to turn to my EM, current EMS billing and exactly how that process works, uh, and how that's recovered. But I believe some of that is also where the task money comes in to assist with it. So, Chief Urban?
So yes, uh, all, you know, by ordinance, we have an ambulance fee schedule and we bill for our ambulance transports. And, um, that's where a significant part of our EMS billing revenue comes from. If a, um, patient does not have insurance, we consider that, uh, uncompensated care, and it falls into our charity care policy in which, uh, um, we, we modified last year to incorporate, uh, patient does not have insurance and they fall within four hundred percent of the federal poverty level, um, we write that off on charity care. And that charity care is what is sent to task. That's where we report to task. Where reimbursements are based on the amount of charity care that the city of Corpus Christi has written off.
What do we normally charge a taxpaying resident for a transport inside the city?
The average bill, uh, is about fourteen hundred dollars.
About fourteen hundred. Well, I get, I ask, I get asked that question all the time. Why does a taxpaying member of this city have to pay for transport to a hospital or whatever? Since we're paying taxes and they're already supporting the fire department. So. And, and that was a decision that was made long before I got here, but I, I do get asked that question.
It's, uh, it's, it's done all around the country. It's, it's done all around the country and it really helps. So our charges are based on what it costs the city to provide the service. And it's an offset on the amount. Otherwise, it would cost, we have a certain amount of cost for the, for on the fire department. And the billing offsets that cost. So it reduces the amount we need from the general fund and other taxes to pay for it.
Yeah. So if we weren't doing that, we'd have to raise more taxes.
The amount from the general fund would have to increase 10 to 12 million dollars a year.
Okay, good. And Mayor, you know, I think it's a great discussion to have about the response to this, to the industry line when they have an upset for the fire department. But I think it's also important to remember that when they go out there, I will assume and bet that there's a number of police officers who have to respond to that as well. So that has to be taken into consideration as well. So.
Yeah, they do. And Chief Mark will get to test of that if he needed to. But the last incident, you.
They're going to be out there directing traffic.
That's a big part of it, is directing traffic and blocking the roads and stuff like that. So there's a piece.
So include that, Peter, and.
Right, yeah. We'll put that, make sure we get that, Councilman Pusley as well. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Suckley?
Seems like, adding on to that, it seems like when we changed that ordinance last year, that we should have proactively gone out to Bob Paulson's group and others and communicated, this is the new ordinance. This is what our new fee schedule is. This is going to be the impact if you have a call.
Right.
So we're kind of like working on it a year later, saying we should have done this, but we probably should have gone out and communicated that.
We should have. And Councilman Hernandez could chime in here, but at the time, it was, it was about residential subdivisions, building right outside the city limits, primarily in the London area. And that was our focus. The modeling was all done on London, on residential. It wasn't until this morning when Councilman Hernandez actually brought up, hey, the refineries and other industry partners are, also should be included, Councilman Pusley as well. So we're going to look at that ordinance, Councilman. And again, last year, it was really just on residential subdivisions in London. But yeah, well, with Chief Wade coming on board, we'll revisit it.
I think it'd be helpful to communicate to Bob Paulson's group and certainly back to RTFC because they also bill. So everybody's on board with how the billing works and what the expectation is.
Agreed.
My, my question was about the engine, the 2004 unit.
Yes.
Does that happen to be station 15?
I do not know the exact station that that one's at.
Okay.
Uh, I'd have to pull the, the location.
Okay. Because I've heard comments about the engine at station 15, so I'm hopeful.
Well, it's a ladder at station 15, but that is probably going to be replaced with one of those aerial ladder trucks come in. I'll have to look at the replacement schedule for which one those are replaced.
Okay. I figured you would do the shift where you would move assets around to different stations.
So, so there's a piece, and I had the logistics in that previous department that I came from. And a big piece we did to try to, and we had to change it to manage our fleet, is really look at how we moved our fleet around. And where our busier companies got the brand-new apparatus, we took the apparatus that then got 40,000 hard miles on it. And when a brand-new one came in, we gave it to the new place and put that one sort of to a slower station. So we could increase the longevity of our units. Instead of just putting a brand-new unit at a station that doesn't run as many calls, you may not get the most use out of that based on your replacement plan. So we're definitely going to look at a holistic approach to where our fleet is and how we do a rotation of our fleet to maximize the use.
Okay. We'll keep our fingers crossed that 15s gets, gets something newer than what they have now.
They are in a ladder truck. So it would have to be when one of the ladder trucks come in.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Roy?
I'm sure we're going to do this, but I think we need to make sure we look at the IDAs and make sure there's no language in there that prohibits billing.
Right. Good point.
Because.
Buck's got it.
You know, I can't imagine we haven't thought about this before.
I know. Right. Maybe, maybe that is the case. But we certainly will. That's a good point. I think Buck's making it up.
We'll double-check all of that before we send a bill to anybody. We'll double-check all the pieces with it, that's for sure.
Uh, Councilman Hernandez?
Okay. I just want to kind of go back and reference that. It was correct. This is when we, what city manager had mentioned about what we were targeting was areas that were not covered by emergency service districts. Now, we still have the double coverage and within the city limits with that. But in terms of, I don't recall seeing anything about not being able to charge them for services rendered with, with regards to the IDA. Plus, we have the IDA coming up for renegotiation. We should specifically call that out as if they, if they're not being charged for those city services and they happen to take advantage of it regardless. Not the EMS side. I don't think EMS apply because we bill them for that anyway. But in terms of fire service, if they're, if they're utilizing it, we have to utilize it if they need backup or whatever, that should be a billable thing. And that ordinance, if we need to modify it to account for IDAs, that's, well, more than, we shouldn't do that. But we shouldn't just accept not being, not charging for services rendered. That just doesn't, that just doesn't make any sense. I'd also look at your, the use of your, you have something here for a type seven brush unit. Well, that should apply as well for, you know, use out in the county or wherever it's at. Because I know station six has one of those units, or sixes, I don't know how you refer to that. But the, but I mean, you know, that, that should be something that's billable if it goes out in the county and does work outside the city limits.
Sure. That's something that the team will look at and we'll work with legal as well in, in the city manager's office to look at how we're doing billing the fire response, the city ordinance and anything else that comes with it. So we'll definitely look at it. Yes. Enhancement seven again goes to the fleet, trying to keep that, that fleet healthy. This is replace five of our frontline units. These are our command units that are out in the field, our chief officers that respond across the city and manage day-to-day operations in the field. It is in line with our replacement plan where we will take those units, put new ones into the field for the command, and then pass those down and get rid of our oldest support vehicles in the fleet. So again, in line with it and trying to maintain and stay ahead of the curve with, with our fleet. And then our enhancement eight, this is what Councilmember Hernandez just brought up. This is a type seven brush unit. This is a little bit different than what you're used to seeing in what they would call a type five, which is the pickup truck with the pump and stuff on the back. This is an ATV style brush unit. Has a small pump, has a small water tank on the back. It diversifies our fleet and gives us some flexibility on responding to incident. We would bring it to an incident with a truck, with it on a trailer. I've used these extensively in that other department that I came from, not only to extinguish fires and hard-to-get places, grass fires, brush fires. We also, and that is the primary purpose, but we also utilize these type seven vehicles on special events. So when you have buck days, for example, or some other day where you have a bunch of folks coming and we're putting standby personnel, could be for medical. But we put these in place with the cooking vendors because there's a hazard with there. And I had seen it before, like the Austin City Limits Fest where a fire broke out by the cooking area and there's propane tanks and it's going. These units can, already on scene, can be moved right into place and extinguish the fire and keep it from spreading. Because it takes a long time to get a larger fire truck into a special event through crowds. So it's a multi-purpose, where the primary purpose would be for brush and grass fire response. We can also utilize it for special events and keeping that venue safe for the people that are there.
Do we have one now?
We do not have one. So this would be an add to fleet for, and again.
What, what fire station is this going to?
So right now, we're looking at potentially putting it at station seven. And while it's more in the core, the challenge with it is when, when folks would look at putting these on an outer station, it's not the fastest thing to always get a truck and a trailer. And when we're looking at timeliness of a response, like where our brush trucks are, they can just jump in and go and start working with your brush truck ops. This would allow station seven, when there's a brush alarm, because we would put it into the response model for the, depending on what alarm it is, they're able to respond as well and bring it, offload it and put it to operation.
Can you identify what sta, where station seven is?
I knew you were going to test me on that, that exact one. Say that again? Staples, right off Staples.
Yeah, that's our, Staples and Dodger.
And Dodger. Okay, okay. Sorry. You have to learn those. I don't know them.
I know. I'm, I'm learning all the addresses as, as we go. But again, I've seen the deployment model with these in, in the department I came from. We didn't have to have it on the outskirts because of the way that we deployed the model to it. And it would be a good add to fleet.
Councilman? How many brush trucks do you have? And where are they?
Three. We have station 15, station six, station nine.
Okay.
Yep. So currently with three. So this would kind of add to it. And again, it would be a little bit different model that we can put out into the field once they're operating. They're highly effective and they can get moving into where a lot of times you get stuck in the pickup truck style ones. The ATV model is able to get in there and put out some of those fires where it would take a while.
Right. Councilman Suckley, this is another good example of, you know, bringing in new ideas. Especially with like the buck days events, where you maneuver through crowds and.
Absolutely. This, and again, I effectively use this on numerous special events to, to really get in, because it's not easy, as you know, to bring a fire truck into a special event in order to stop the progression of a fire incident. That's for sure. Okay.
I think this is a great idea. Again, I'm just overwhelmed by the fact that it's going to cost $56,000.
See that painted red? Anything that they put red and fire on, somehow they increase the cost.
I bought one of these that has four doors and air conditioning. I didn't pay anywhere near that. I just, just blows me away that we don't have a better competitive feel for these kinds of things.
Yeah. Yeah. It is, it is not just Corpus Christi Fire Department that has to pay the price. It's, it's all over, Councilman.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Chief Wade.
Yep. And then our final enhancement here is, this is Mayor, what you were talking about. This is the increased city retirees, which would give a COLA of 100, $110 monthly to the retirees, which is just a, a great added benefit to them. As I believe they've gone quite some time without a COLA, if I have been advised correctly. So.
I think it's been over a decade.
Over a decade with it. So this is fantastic. And the task force that was put together to help increase that is just a big benefit to our retirees who've worked for years.
Sorry, I was a little ahead of myself.
It's okay. You knew it was coming. So, yeah. And again, as it says, pending the required approval from the Fire Act of membership, and I do think that that will go forward.
Thank you.
And can I just, Mayor, add that Constance Sanchez, I want to thank her. She sits on the board actually at Fire. And, and Mayor, your appointee that you have, I forget his name now, but what is it?
Tim.
Penn, that's right. Penn, Mr. Thomas, Penn Thomas. He does a great job for, for this board and for the city. So we want to thank Mr. Thomas and thank Constance as well for her advocacy on this board.
Absolutely. Thank you, Constance.
Okay. That does it for the fire department proposal.
I have a question, another one.
Another, there's been a number of questions.
So Chief Wade, I don't know, let's see, I asked someone for the name of it, smoke extractors. And we looked at them. Isn't that what it was when we were at the LPC or RTCF? The.
Oh, you're talking, yes, you're talking about the diesel exhaust systems.
The diesel exhaust systems. So I know in our new fire stations, that will be a part of that construction.
It should be, is that being included? So, yep.
Anything new. Okay. So, so do we have a plan or do we want to address, I don't know, you know, what, what it costs to retrofit?
Yeah, I think we need to look at a plan again. That's part of the cancer prevention for our firefighters that are there to keep the diesel exhaust out of not just the apparatus bay, but diesel exhaust can leach into the actual building and the living area. So ply movements, I think, and that's one name brand, are important to have that diesel exhaust where our firefighters hook it up. And, and what it does before the truck pulls in, there's a hose that hooks up to the exhaust of the fire apparatus and it starts to pull the diesel out. And same thing, it stays connected to it. So when the fire apparatus starts up to go out of the station, that hose is still attached to the exhaust and then it slides down a track and comes off because it's stuck to the exhaust magnetically. And I think it's something, a big enhancement that we could do to benefit our firefighter's health.
Right. Because this leads, it's a direct correlation from what I've read to cancer.
Diesel exhaust is not good to breathe.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, should we look at that? I'd like to look at that within this.
The chief's going to put together a plan on that.
Yep. That's something that we'll look at and put a plan. What does it cost? As you mentioned, are there grants available in which we could apply for and put those into stations? And I think that is definitely a worthwhile investment into our city.
Yeah, many cities, Mayor, we're a little behind. Like the city I came from did this probably a decade, two decades ago. You know, they retrofitted all their stations.
Retrofitted all the stations and put the attachment on every one of the fire apparatus to be pulled in. It is something we need to do.
I'm just curious, it's, I know that's, it's going to be an investment, but maybe we should look at it. I mean, is there a time to look at it now to be able to do this in phases if we had to and start?
I don't have a cost of what it would to retrofit it each station. Again, I think if, it would take a little bit of time. I think we need to look at that. But we also need to look at the different funding opportunities, which if I go back into history, as, as the city manager said, I believe in the city where I was at, I think we may have gotten a grant for that as well to help because nothing's cheap to retrofit and to go in and put it in place. And if a grant can help cover some of that cost, we should definitely pursue if there's one out there for it.
Please keep me apprised. I'd really like to move forward on that.
Well, the chief knows, one of the primary things when we interviewed him was the health and safety of the firefighter in the station. So that includes all amenities within this, the firehouse where they live for several days in a row. Things to include their sleeping quarters, their kitchen quarters, their relaxing quarters, you know? And to include this, the exhaust, we began talking about it with Chief Rocha.
Yes, we did.
But Chief Wade, who has probably a pretty big list, is figuring out what to do for our second and third. But I think he would agree this is an important one.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see it because I imagine it may go in phases. And what is the name of it? Exhaust?
So a diesel exhaust system would be the generic term that we want to give. Because there's probably, you know, I'm familiar with one just because that's what I've dealt with. But there's probably a couple vendors that are out there that do install them in there. We would have to look at all the options and then what it would take to retrofit the stations for the exhaust systems.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I think Councilman Hernandez?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Do you have some questions on your individual line item? Things in your fire administration, you have a line item for reserve appropriations of $500,000 that what didn't exist before. Can you tell me what that's for?
Yeah, let me, give me the, one second, because we looked at that. Yeah, the retiree COLA was put into there. That's that $500,000.
That's what you're reserved appropriations for. So why not just put that under the retirement system as opposed to?
Good question. It's one of the things is we've had the brief conversations on that I'll be looking at as we go into this next fiscal year, once this is approved, is really looking at where the line items are and where the money's at, to try to reduce the amount of time we have to move money from one line item to another and make sure that those are lined up. I don't have the answers exactly why that was put into that, into that line item, but that's what it's for.
Yeah, maybe Eddie's kind of looking at me over here, but I think it's subject to the vote. So it's not confirmed yet that this will actually happen because the active firefighters need to approve this benefit change. So once that happens in the adopted budget, if it's approved, we'll put it into the retirement line item.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. And I appreciate that your overall budget has come down from, from last year, at least the approved budget. But you had a significant increase from the actual amended budget from your proposed budget. That being said, you still have, I still have a concern with your overtime that is still close to 12%. But the, it hasn't really changed, even though your manning levels have gone up from, from 2022, from 422 sworn off, sworn officers to 446 last year, and you're going to have 455 this year. But your overtime hasn't really changed. And I know we had this discussion beforehand as to the metrics behind it. You know, this is one of those things where we want to understand why this is occurring. So I don't know, at some point in the future, you can have some sort of a presentation as to why that's the case. So with that, with that, where are you with your budget in terms of your overtime for this year?
Right. So we're looking, when we look at the operations overtime budget, what we're spending to actually put the firefighters on the seats for our minimum staffing each day, we're estimating, we'll probably come in somewhere between that 6% and 10% of the overtime budget being used and not at the 12% of maybe what you have seen in the past. As I said before, there's so many variables that go into it, where you may increase staffing. But then did you, we increase our minimum staffing, which we did. We went from 102 to 104. So that's two more positions as we increase the number of four-person apparatus. And not always just because you increase the number of firefighters that are there. There's many other variables that, that come into play. Because we haven't changed our scheduled leave. We have not increased where we said more people can take off on vacation or more people get what is called the Kelly Days, or more people can use the personal leave. But there are other items that go into overtime, such as, and I think it's been mentioned here before, is such as state deployments, where we go on the wildfire deployments. That money comes directly out of the overtime, depending on how much we have been gone or we have deployed. However, all of that is reimbursable back from the state. we have been gone or we have deployed. However, all of that is reimbursable back from the state, where they pay for not only the members that have deployed, but the backfill cost. The other things that come into play, and I'll have to go back and actually look into trending, because I haven't had the opportunity. I just pulled the recent numbers to see where we're at. But how much military do we have where we leave? And we discussed that. If we have members that are still reservists, and you get more deployed in a year, well, that's a vacancy on a fire truck that we've got a backfill, and the federal government doesn't give us more money for that. You have to look at your injury trends, where if a firefighter is injured and they're off a truck, and we've had two recently, and they're going to be long-term off a truck, that injury is another vacancy in the field. So although your authorized strength looks like you have zero vacancies, when you start adding up the FIMLA leave for people being off, injury leave, military deployments, all of those numbers start playing into the variables. And then furthermore, as we mentioned, we'll have to look at a trend analysis of what our overtime hourly rate has been. I have seen, and this is just across the fire service as a whole, our young folks, our young individuals that are now coming into the fire service, many of them that have a lower pay rate, they're not working overtime. They don't want to work overtime. They don't sign up for overtime. They want to be paid and go have time off. Where our more senior members are still valuing overtime, because they're paying for children going to college or what have you, and you're seeing some of the higher-rate employees that are willing to work the overtime to achieve minimum staffing. So I've seen before where overtime rates have gone from thirty-four dollars an hour to forty-eight dollars an hour. I think we're trending possibly close to fifty-one dollars an hour in an overtime rate. Again, it's based on who's signing up to work the overtime to achieve minimum staffing. So there's a lot of variables that go into it, and I'll have to do a deep dive into it. But I do think this year, we won't be spending probably all of our overtime budget of operations in the field.
Okay. And I understand you just got here, so I don't want to beat you up on it. But, and I understand the situation where you don't have your deputy and you're missing people. So, you know, when you get those positions filled, I'd really like to see this, as to what your trends are and what the reality is, because I don't think we got a clear picture of it in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a few more questions on your training. Do you have an increase in your professional services under training of twenty-two percent from, I guess, budgeted last year, six hundred thirty-seven to seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand? And then a decrease in your fire training salary and wages from four million eight hundred thousand to two million five hundred and fifty-six thousand? Can you explain what's going on there with your training?
With our, with our training budget specifically? I'm trying to look at which one you're looking at, which number, if it's.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Under professional services, under fire training, you have a proposed budget of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven and ninety-six cents. That's specific, but, which is an increase over the budget last year, but your amended budget has it much lower. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on with your training as to what, what the reason for the strangest, strangeness in the budget.
So that was a decrease in the cadet numbers that we had, where we had, I think, sixty-something cadets in at one time, I think, for the last fiscal year, and currently we don't have that. So part of that is reflected into the training budget, from my understanding.
Okay. And Peter, this is more a question for you. Just like in the police department, you have a significant increase in your, in your, in your building maintenance budget.
Right.
I mean, we're going from four hundred thousand dollars to one point six million, which is not a bad thing. But I think you don't have any, you don't have asset management as part of one of your workshops.
Right.
But it seems like it's going to be a reflection that they're going to be receiving a lot more of this allocation to do these services, but we don't, we're not going to have a presentation from them. So maybe as, with this, maybe you can bring Charlie into some of our budget presentations to kind of explain some of the things that they're doing and what mechanisms they're doing, since they're getting so much more money associated with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And Eddie, are those allocations, all asset management, is it healthcare and others as well, right?
Some of that million dollars for that was for IT and stuff, going into new buildings, so it was specific one times with it.
This is specifically building maintenance. There's some other stuff in IT. It's a different line item. This is specifically for building maintenance and services under fire stations that are going from three, just under four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars to one point six million.
Okay.
And so I want to be, you know, I want to understand what the plan is with regards to this, because, you know, I've been a big advocate for preventive maintenance, and this is important stuff, and I'm not complaining about it. I just want to make sure that we understand what the schedule of work's going to be. Do you have the capacity to do it in asset and?
Yeah, no problem. As a matter of fact, today, I'm going to be meeting with Charles and Steve to go over Charles's business plan, because he, he's evolving that department. I talked on the Blake Radio Show this week about it before. You know, before, there was no asset management department. We had expensive contracts to do maintenance that nobody was really overseeing. Secondly, the Fire Department has not had good service from an asset management department. They've had to kind of make do on their own. So we'll get you that report that Constance, that shows you the budget and the better service that we're trying to provide for the fire stations.
Yeah, some of that, that one is not an allocation you're looking at. That's, that's, a lot of that is a furniture and equipment for Fire Station Three.
Okay, that's not what it says here. It says building maintenance and service.
Yeah.
Right? So if that, if you have some sort of supplies or other things that shouldn't be under maintenance and services.
Right. You're right. We'll, we'll make sure that it gets into the proper account when we move to the adopted. That's correct.
Okay.
But maintenance is going up. The cost for the strict maintenance is going up. We'll show you that.
Okay. I mean, like I said, I don't, I agree that that's probably a good use of our resources. I just, I just want to make sure I understand the picture of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pasley.
Yeah. Chief Wade, if, and Peter, maybe you know this too, if my memory serves me correctly, aren't we putting a, one of those smoke exhaust systems into the new Fire Station Three?
We are, no. Fire Station Three, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the new Fire Station on Morgan, that'll replace the existing one. That modern station will have.
I remember that being one of the big things that the firefighters really asked for.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's built in. Council approved that contract last week.
And Chief, where are you on staffing right now? Are you pretty well-staffed, or you got several vacancies, or?
We are at zero sworn vacancies.
Okay.
So we have four hundred and forty-six. In four days, we're going to have a resignation take place with one of our, you know, couple-year firefighters. So we'll be at a minus one at that point in our sworn vacancies.
Well, that's excellent.
It is very excellent. It's very hard for any metropolitan city to achieve.
Yeah.
This is probably one of the few cities that I've seen that has sat, that is at a zero vacancy for any point in time. And a little difference, and I, we may see, and I've talked to the city manager about it, is really breaking apart, because sometimes what can be confusing, and it confused me at the very beginning of this, is where cadets were counted in the sworn position. So it looked like we had a whole bunch more people. And I'm going to be used to and start doing it where cadets are a different line item, because it's important to know what the actual sworn authorized strength is out in the field, first cadets that are in training.
Sure.
That'll be coming out. So, but we are at four hundred and forty-six currently.
Well, congratulations on your presentation. And I was very impressed with the fact that you've only been here a few months. And if I'd have been in your shoes, I probably would have let one of these very skilled individuals present.
Chief Markle ribbon me the whole time. They're here.
So, but anyway, great job. And you had a great team behind you there, I'm sure, schooling you, but it was very impressive, Chief Wade. Thank you very much for that effort.
But it's been the full city staff. It's everybody from the city manager's office to Ed's office. Everybody's been very helpful in the transition and working through some challenges.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. I think that's all the questions.
Yeah, great. Good job, Chief Wade. Thank you.
Mayor, hold on. I forgot one thing.
Another one.
Sorry, just, it's on the capital.
One compliment, you couldn't.
It's all right. It's on a, on the capital improvement plan. You do have a few things that are come, that are designed for Fire Station Eight and Fire Station Ten and some improvements to Two, Six, and Seven, and Fifteen. You know, some of these things are, you know, we look at moving them forward. Do you have somebody assigned to these, or what's your plan with getting these moved forward?
Getting these moved forward. So right now, Chief Mathis is over that, working through it, and he's working with the various offices to continue pushing that. The design plans for Eight and Ten, I believe, should be coming up pretty soon. Next week is on the agenda. And again, that will be the design for two new fire stations, which is important, as we have aging facilities. And overall, I don't have it memorized in my head, but there is a multi-year plan for the capital improvement for numerous stations, either major renovations or replacements.
Yeah, in the long-term CIP, Councilman, in our capital improvement program, we're recommending replacing half of our eighteen stations that were built in the nineteen-fifties era. So overtime, not all at once, obviously, so.
Which is a great investment into the facilities. I mean, and I mentioned it the first time I was here, it's, our firefighters don't just work out there for eight hours. They live there, third of their lives, and improving those to operate out of it will be fantastic for them.
I think those are Fire Stations Two, Six, Seven, and Fifteen.
Those are having, those are having, those are improvements.
Which ones are you talking about?
So we'll be looking at eights and tens, and then further out down the road, I believe it's nines, sevens, and a number of them. But that's, as we go further down.
Well, for me, the, the ones that service the District Five are Four, Six, Fourteen, and Seventeen. So out of those, out of those, I would say fourteen is in the worst condition. And that's, that's actually now in District Three.
Renovations are occurring there right now, as we speak, to that station. We have crews over there that are working on some renovations at the station.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chief Wade, thank you so much. Great presentation. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Great, Mayor. We have Judge Choppa is going to begin our municipal court presentation, and then Gilbert Hernandez will also speak to this issue.
So it's the back button that. Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Councilman, and Mr. Zanoni. I'm here with Municipal Court with Mr. Hernandez. And we'll go ahead and begin with our first slide, which is our mission statement. Our mission here at Municipal Court is to provide all citizens who come into our court with a fair and impartial due process of their proceeding, as well as handling all of their cases in an efficient and timely manner. A little bit about Municipal Court is, we'd like to tell you really all the hard work that we have been doing. So far this fiscal year, we have had forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven cases filed with Municipal Court. We have closed ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-eight. We have scheduled one hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-one cases for court hearings and trials, and we have issued a total of one hundred and seven thousand five hundred and twelve warrants. Our organization of Municipal Court, we're one organization, but we have two departments. We have the Administration Department, which is headed by Mr. Gilbert Hernandez, that answers to Ms. Constance Sanchez, and of course, Mr. Peter Zanoni. Mr. Hernandez oversees three components, and the first one is CDC. That is the City Detention Center, where all of our arrested people are taken and processed, and they're magistrated. We have twenty-two CDC officers there. Also, the Marshals, which includes the Head Marshals. There are six total marshals. And of course, our contract bailiffs, where we have a total of six bailiffs. He also oversees the clerks. There is a total of twenty-seven clerks, which includes one Chief Deputy Clerk, three supervisory clerks, and three, twenty-three other clerks who handle the battlegrounds here at Municipal Court, and also oversees the juvenile case managers. He has an Assistant Director and a Functional Analyst to assist him as well. The Judicial Department is comprised of six full-time judges, which includes me, as well as the eight part-time judges. We do have one full-time judge who works overnight, five days a week, all night long, to magistrate. The eight part-time judges work in the evenings and on the weekends to magistrate those individuals who come into the City Detention Center. Our achievements that we have made through this fiscal year includes processing over eighty thousand cases in our queues. And our queues are the way that we handle our cases internally within Municipal Court. It's the way our cases travel in between the clerks and the judges to get orders taken care of and out, back to the individuals in our community. The judges have issued over a hundred thousand orders to date. We've also enhanced Court A. Court A is our walk-in court that is available to the public Monday through Friday, eight o'clock until four-thirty. And we've enhanced this to allow anybody who comes into court to leave with a court order. So that really opens up a lot of time for our clerks to handle other matters that they have, making our overall court more efficient. The third thing that we have achieved this year is really expanded the way that we are utilizing the text messaging and the calls to reach those individuals that have cases. This has greatly improved the presence of individuals coming into court and resolving their citations. So before a person has a court hearing, a text message is sent out to them, letting them know if they've missed a payment plan date. A text message is sent out to those individuals, reminding them they've missed a payment plan to come into court. If they've missed their court hearing and a warrant is in the process of going out, or a warrant has gone out, and a text message is sent out to that individual as well to let them know, so that allows them to come into court without being arrested and resolve their case. The last achievement, which is really good, is any individual that has been cited for an ordinance violation is being sent a letter to appear in court within thirty days, as well as having all of our trials, our non-jury trials, our bench trials, and our jury trials being set within thirty days. So this is the way that we have made our court so that we can make it more efficient for those to come in, to get processed as soon as possible, to touch them and reach out to them, to stay in contact with them, so that they can get their case taken care of. The rest of the information, I'm going to hand over to Mr. Hernandez. That's going to give you the meat of the court.
Judge, before you leave, could, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So are you confident that doing this on a go-forward basis is going to allow you to replace the work that the marshals have been doing in the past with respect to reaching out to people in the community for ordinance violations or missing their payments or whatever? Has, have the marshals been handling that in the past?
So from what my understanding is, is I'm confident that we'll be able to move forward and achieve everything that we've been achieving. Yes, sir. I am.
Okay. And, and Peter, this is more maybe a comment for you. If we could go back to the organizational chart for just a minute. I've looked at this several times. It, it just always struck me that this organizational chart seems to be way overbalanced to one side. If you go over to the city manager's side, it's like everybody except the chief judge and the judges that work for her are separated. I just wonder how that impacts the efficiency of what we're doing.
Right. So Councilman, this org chart is new. It does reflect, if we look at the one from last year, it's a very disjointed org chart. I want to thank Judge Choppa for working with Gilbert to create a chart that shows that this connectivity. The reason it is the way it is is the council appoints the presiding judge and the part full-time judges. They report to the city council, not the city manager.
I understand that.
Whether it's me or somebody else. And so all the other positions are city manager overseen positions, if you will. What we do know is the Judge Bowl report, which they did, and the city I came from, did have the presiding judge oversee the whole court, meaning the functions that Gilbert has today. The presiding judge oversaw those. We're going to work through that this year. We're implementing with the recommendation here in this budget, and many things we've already done, numerous process improvements. So coming up through this year, we'll look at this, this option of having one person overseeing the courts.
Okay.
Right now, we have two laws, if you will, I guess, if Buck can help me here. We have state law and then another law that was passed specific for Corpus Christi. state law, and then another law that was passed specific for Corpus Christi, that sets this up this way. And so, I think there'd be a charter change potentially, but we could even work around it. So, what we agree to is that, let's get through the low-hanging fruit and some of the first-stage process improvements, and we'll continue to look at this this year, and maybe come back mid-year or next budget, based on the feedback on any other changes.
Yeah, and, and, and that's one of the other reason I brought it up, is, you know, the comments that Judge Bull may, but it, it's just odd to see an organizational chart that is way overbalanced to one side, but yet it's all supposed to be in the same building or the same apartment.
Right, and the key is working together as a team, and that's what, with Judge Choppa especially, we've seen, and Gilbert, and the prosecuting, our city attorney's office, it's really three entities that have to make this business, if you will, work well. Everything from clearing cases to good customer service, it's not just the judges, it's not just Gilbert, it's not just the prosecutors, everybody has to work together.
Okay.
And so, we've committed to that. Constance Sanchez, who oversees it, and myself are meeting monthly now with this group to review performance metrics and business operations, and, and they meet more often than that, they being the Judge and Gilbert and prosecutors, so. It's a good thing, Councilman, as you saw the clearance, you saw the stats that the judge read off, this is tremendous, from a year ago.
No, no, I have no argument about that.
Right, but part of that is just from what we've done so far, so, we're committed to continuing the improvements and continuing the collaboration, and we're not done yet, so, we hear what you're saying, Councilman Pusley, and we'll, yeah, we'll continue to bring things forward to the council here on the Municipal Court Committee as well, so we'll bring things there as well.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And before you leave, Peter, if I understood right, the review of our traffic fines are controlled by the Chief Judge?
They are, yes, sir, and let's have the judge talk to you about it, because you brought it to my attention back at the goal, the budget workshop with the City Council in April, and Judge Choppa explained it, she'll explain it here to the council, that she, this position, has the authority to change those without even council approval, right, Judge?
That's, that's correct.
But as the judge, and she'll elaborate, she's been doing a lot of process improvement, she wanted to make sure she had enough time, let me have her explain.
Okay.
Yeah, because they haven't been updated in probably a couple decades, right, Judge?
As long as I've been here, from what I know, that they have not been revised and looked at, and that has been on my plate to look at them, but I'd like to look at a whole. There have been a lot of things that I've been tackling since I have gotten here. I feel like we do have all of our wheels moving and working together in a smooth operation, so that is something that I would like to look into. There's other things that I'd like to look into with regards to the cities, you know, where we stand economically. We have a window fine, and so, what the window fine is, a fine that if any individual just wants to come in and just pay it, they can pay it. It, it needs to not be one that, you know, hey, if you come into court and I look at all the facts, I can raise it as a deterrent, or as a punishment, because you've had, you know, two other tickets this year, and they're all speeding, or this is one going, you know, ninety-four miles an hour on the highway. It needs to not be so low, so, you know, there is something to look at and take into considerations, other factors. Yes, sir.
Well, I just, the reason I bring this up, Judge, I think it's a very important part of what I brought up earlier today when Chief Markle was making his presentation. These haven't been reviewed in a very long time, and we need to do that, because if we're giving out forty or fifty thousand traffic citations on a yearly basis, obviously, it's not acting as a deterrent. So, if we raise those fees, maybe that helps with respect to the problems we're having with the speeding on our streets here in this city. But for me, it's just a very important part of the whole process. And, you know, if you stop somebody for going ninety miles an hour on Interstate Thirty-Seven, and it's a hundred-dollar fine, you know, that's, it's just not going to be a deterrent. And you have kids racing on Ocean Drive that continually get picked up and, and fined for that, but they continue to do it, then something's broken our process, so. I, I just feel like it's extremely important, and I'm sorry if I brought this up out of order, I didn't know.
No, you didn't at all, I appreciate you bringing it up, Councilman, we did bring it up as part of my budget, and we did bring it up at the goal-setting session, so, the Chief Judge has that authority, and as Judge Choppa said, she's been doing a lot of revising to the business processes, this is on her plate.
I know you've had your hands full, and I certainly appreciate that.
She wants to make sure she does it holistically, and, and, and a good job, so.
Agreed.
Late of this fall, I think, is what you said, Judge?
Yes.
Fall, early spring, because it has been probably ten years plus that the rates have been adjusted.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilman Pusley, just so you know, it starts on NS Jocelyn, it ends on Ocean Drive.
Yeah, yeah.
I hear them every single night.
I know. And, and to that point, and I'd already reached out, and I know, I think I owe you a phone call to coordinate, but it isn't, it, it's across the board, so you have animal care services, that it's the same thing. We have to make sure that whatever we're implementing makes a difference, because that's what we hear, is, is, well, sure, you cited them, but then they go over there, and it goes from a whatever fine to nothing fine, and it's a repetitive cycle. So, that's extremely important to me in, in moving forward. The other day, you know, selling puppies out there on the, in the parking lot, if that violation is not, you know, i- it is not, what's that?
If it's not a deterrent.
Well, a deterrent, right, or implemented and enforced, thank you. Enforced at its, at its greatest, you know, degree, it doesn't end, so, to, to your point, I agree completely, whether it's speeding, or animals, or what have you, it's, we, we need to change that, we really do.
I understand, and I thank you for those remarks, and letting us know. It, it is a process, so somebody can come into court and contest, and they do go, and they see prosecutors, and it is a process that they go through, and getting their citation resolved. Coming in and just paying it on their own, or seeing the judge, isn't the only process, they can also go and negotiate with prosecutors as well. They can always go to trial as well, and sometimes those have an impact on the way, and the way those citations are resolved.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's all the questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Gilbert Hernandez for Municipal Court, now will be presenting the performance measures. So, total fines and fees revenues, these are net revenues that are collected by the court. Actual in 2022 was six-point-five million collected. We estimate that we'll collect seven million in revenues this year, and we target next year at seven-point-six million. Cases filed, so a court wants to make sure that we're closing more cases than cases are being filed. This, or 2022, there were seventy thousand cases filed, this includes traffic violations, animal control violations, court compliance, but also arrests that are Class Cs, that are filed through arrests, and some through the prosecutor's office. Same year, 2022, the court closed eighty-four thousand cases. There was, this was the first year that the court closed more cases than cases were filed that year.
I'm going to...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Councilman Hernandez has a question.
Under your cases closed, is that adjudicated, or does that include dismissed?
Everything.
Everything, so...
Adjudicated and dismissed.
How many of the, of that hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand were dismissed?
I don't have that number, sir, I can get, I can get that for you.
The, the reason I ask that question is because I, I've had some individual code enforcement cases that have come, that I've asked about, and I can think of a specific one that had six different violations under four citations, and all but one of the violations were dismissed. And so, I, I'm, you know, I'm a little disappointed that that number isn't available, because that is a key indication of what work is being done, about, you know, we, we complain about the district attorney this way too, right, in terms of how many are actually adjudicated versus how many are dismissed. Or at least a percentage, do we know the percentage?
I do not, and I, but I can get that number for you. So, the hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand cases is a lot of cleanup. These are cases that are old cases, that we have been working to, to get closed through dismissal, through uncollectibles. What you're referring to is more on, on, in, while in the court, what's going in through the court session, while a prosecutor may, and Buck, I don't know if you can provide information on this, can plea and bargain for somebody that has five violations, they'll dismiss four violations, and, and up, increase the one violation that that person has to pay.
So, why don't we do this, in, in terms of understanding what the metrics are for this? You can, you can have that set up as what were just outright dismissed, what were bargained down, what was actually adjudicated in terms of, you know, violations paid, whatever, however you want to do that, but it just, it seems like having the, the cases closed seems a little, seems to obfuscate what the numbers are. And I'd like to have a little bit clearer understanding of what we're, what's actually being completed.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
We can get those numbers for you, absolutely. Warrants issued, sixty-six thousand warrants were issued fiscal 2022. Again, this is the first year that these many warrants were issued, the highest that have been issued thus far. Fiscal twenty-three, with sixty, we estimate that there's going to be sixty-six thousand cases, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Gilbert, I'm going to interrupt you one minute, Mr. Sackley.
I just had one, one additional to add on to Councilman Hernandez. So, when we get that data, can you also break it down by traffic violations, STR ordinance violations, water violations, so we kind of get grouped?
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We estimate that there'll be sixty-six thousand cases filed this year. We estimate that we'll close a hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand cases, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four this year. Warrants issued, we estimate that will, that the judges will issue a hundred-and-forty-three thousand cases this year. Again, that's, that's twice the amount from, from the prior year. Target for 2024, we don't have a control on the number of cases that are being filed, we estimate that about sixty-seven thousand cases will be filed, that's through PD, all the other departments as well. We want to control, continue to close cases, we'll estimate that a hundred thousand cases will be closed. Again, the hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand is a lot of cleanup work, that by next year, we'll, we'll have a lot of those cases closed as well. And then warrants issued, we want to continue issuing warrants, obviously, on, for people who fail to appear or fail to comply, so we're targeting that at a hundred-and-forty-three Court budget, this is, this is all the departments together, judicial, administration, CDC, at seven-point-zero-four million. Six-point-five million is out of the general fund. Five-hundred-and-forty thousand out of special revenue funds. Twenty-twenty-three budget was six-point-two million. Twenty-twenty-four is six-point-five million, and this is in the general fund, for a change of three-hundred thousand. In the special revenues, it's four-hundred-and-eighty thousand for 2023. Budget proposal is five-hundred-and-forty thousand, with a change of sixty thousand. Total for six-point-six million this fiscal year, and then proposing a seven-point-zero-four million for next year. There are seventy-eight positions, that includes the clerk's office, the CDC, the marshals, and judicial, with two positions through the special revenue funds. This fiscal year, we're proposing seventy-two year, seventy-two positions, that's a elimination of the marshals by six positions. Proposed budget, general fund, again, six-point-five million. Most of that pays for the four-point-seven million in personnel, that's seventy-two percent. Operating is eight-hundred thousand, at twelve percent, with allocations at one million, with sixteen percent. A lot of that comes through the fines and fees, and then one-point-seven through general We have the special revenue funds as well, five-hundred-and-forty thousand. Personnel is a hundred-and-ten thousand, that's twenty percent. That's the two juvenile case managers. Operating is four-hundred thousand. Operating through special funds includes your technology fund, which funds the security and all security systems within the court. It also funds the technology, most of our, our software is funded through the technology fund, and these funds are funded by citations being paid that these fees are collected. allocations, six percent, at thirty thousand. A lot of this is for the benefits for those two personnel members. We have one enhancement, and that's to improve the INCODE software upgrade from version nine to version ten through the end of this year. To do that, we do have to clean a lot of work, there's a lot of cases that have been closed more than five years, that are older than 2014. We have to plan by removing these cases out of the system, we don't want to, we don't want to migrate to version ten with old data. And then, once we migrate to version ten, then there'll be a little bit more capabilities, such as customers having the capability to have recurring payments. On payment plans, it's very important, important to have, because they, they can just have their payments automatically taken. And if they update their address online, it'll also update the address on INCODE, which is very important to have. After, after that, then, once we have migrate to version ten, then there's a possibility of migrating our data or software into the cloud. Going into the cloud provides easy access to the software from anywhere that you're at, reduces IT dependence, robust protection from ransomware, modernized software that will always be up to date, and then it's easier software interface to learn and use.
Are you going to keep the database in the cloud as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Once we migrate to, to the cloud, that is the intention.
So, the software and the data will be offsite?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. So, that's going to be also your backup, I assume?
That's an IT that we'll, we'll have to answer that question, but I'll ask IT on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because some, some IT departments, they don't depend on the cloud or backup of their data. Software, meaning you can always go to the vendor and say, hey, I need another CD or a thumb drive, I need to load it. But your data sometimes, and, and there may be some state regulations on that about how it's required to be backed up by a separate system, you know, that sort, so, anyway, thank you.
And we'll, we'll get that with IT and provide that information, thank you, sir. So, this budget does propose the elimination of the city marshals program. This is six positions with four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand coming out of the, their pay and benefits. I do want to say that I met with Judge Bull early February, I met directly with him. Because I supervise or oversee the marshals and all staff, he did not need to meet with them. I, I provided the information that, that he needed. So, the marshals, the Municipal Court of Record Administrator supervises the city marshals. The duties of the city marshals have been to execute warrants of arrest, subpoenas, and other legal processes issued out of the Municipal Court within the city limits. So, that's, that's, their major function is to execute the warrants of arrest. Now, we did pull the larger seven cities to see what they were doing with marshals. Houston, San Antonio, Austin, El Paso, Arlington do not have city marshals. Dallas has city marshals, but they don't use them for warrant enforcement. They use them for detention sergeants, prisoners transfers, parking enforcement, investigate environmental crimes, enforce idling and scrap tire ordinance, and part of their homeless response team. Fort Worth was the only city that, that has marshals that actually enforce the warrants, the Class C warrants. We then took the, I wanted to find the stats, so we took their, their statistics for the first quarter of this year, from January through March, and compared that to PD arrests for Class C. Now, these are, these are arrests for Class C misdemeanors only made by... for Class C misdemeanors only made by CCPD. Um, I was able to determine this information because all Class Cs, uh, that are arrested are set for, um, a bond hearing. And so in January, there was two-hundred-and-seventy-nine people arrested by CCPD. In January as well, the marshals made contact and/or arrest fifty, with fifty-one people. Now, when I say contact, it's not that they're always making an arrest. If, uh, somebody, if they knock on a door and somebody doesn't open, they leave the hanger, their name is on there, and if they make contact with their person, then that's, that's, uh, included in that. Or if they bring that person in, or if for whatever reason they don't make an arrest, decide not to make an arrest, uh, that person is still, um, counted. So fifty-one people in January. In February, CCPD arrested two-hundred-and-seventy-four people for Class C misdemeanors. The marshals arrested thirty-eight, uh, during the same month. March, uh, CCPD arrested three-hundred-and-ninety-four people, and the marshals seventy-five. Now, this is when we had the, um, warrant roundup, and that's why the numbers increased a little bit. But if you take that, uh, it, it comes out to about two, two per day is the average, that people that are being arrested by the marshals.
Per day or per week, is it, uh?
Um, is it, I think it's per day, maybe it's per week, yeah.
I think it was per week. It's two, two, two arrests or contacts per marshal per week.
Per week, yeah.
So two.
Yes.
Per marshal, okay. Uh, Councilman Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. So, um, are you comparing the police department versus that has, um, you know, three-hundred uniformed officers that, that arrest people to six marshals?
Right, sir. The reason why is because...
Because that would equal to like point five or something per police officer. I mean, it's...
It's, it's only Class Cs, right? So, so there's a whole lot more arrests made for, for, um, felonies and, um, higher misdemeanors. This is only taking account of those cases that are Class C, just traffic, uh, violations. Okay, I, I...
Why the comparison though? I mean, you have so many more police officers versus only a handful of, of marshals.
Right. The comparison is because if the marshals were to be eliminated, there's still a lot more arrests being done by police officers on Class Cs.
So, okay, so you're gonna send police officers to, to do these warrants?
They're, no, they're already arresting people on, on, when they have a Class C arrest or a Class C warrant, if they're stopped.
Okay, it's only if they're stopped, they're not actively going after?
Correct.
Okay, but the marshals would actively go after somebody specific?
They actively, they actively seek for people, but their numbers are very low.
And, and once again, those are contacts. A, a good portion of them are contacts, they're not necessary arrests. In the poli- in the case of the police officers, those are arrests.
So it's not, you're, we're not doing apples to apples here?
That's right. Well, I, I guess it, if anything, he's leaning towards the side of the marshals. In other words, this makes, because it's not actual arrests, it's just contacts that they go out there. So that many amount of contacts, uh, you know, to have that amount of contacts for, uh, four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars, it just, it just, it doesn't, it does, it's not the fruition, the, what it yields is not effective. The value is just not there. And whereas, on the other situation, and, and typically those are, as the individual said before, those individuals typically aren't the ones that are gonna pay anyway. It's just that when a police officer stops someone for speeding, or whatever the case, and they have them checked out, then at that point they're recognized. Anyway.
Yeah, I, I understand the question. I just, this, the, the comparisons didn't, I didn't quite understand what you were trying to accomplish with this, uh, in terms of just contact and/or arrests, or misdemeanor arrests only, uh, versus all arrests for w- and this is just, and is it with CCPD, is this warrant arrests, or is this, I mean, they find somebody that does a Class C, they observe it and they arrest them? I mean, what? I mean, none of this, this doesn't, doesn't make any sense.
Right, sir. So, so CCPD, again, it's all Class Cs, includes any, any Class C arrest that they made for, on a person.
So it doesn't have to be a warrant?
It doesn't have to be a warrant. So these, these includes, yeah.
All right, all right. Uh, okay, thanks.
So the marshals, like I said, their, their main responsibility is to con- make contact with offenders who have warrants at their home. This is a, this process is very dangerous and dangerous and on a, it's high risk on Class C misdemeanor, on a Class C misdemeanor. Their training is limited. Their training is not provided by CCPD. Majority of their training is, is provided through their biannual forty, forty-hour Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Training that is required for, by peace officers to take, uh, to continue their certification or to keep up with their certification. We believe that it's an outdated, outdated business model, given the enhancement of today, uh, to today's technology that provides better clearance of, of cases, um, revenue and, and warrants being cleared. The reduction in force policy of the city of Corpus Christi has strong protocols in place to assist employees with job placement. We've already met, HR and I have already met with all the employees affected. HR is meeting with impacted employees to assist with the potential placement in other city departments. And I stand by for any questions.
I don't see any ques- I, I don't see any questions, any other questions, Gilbert? Thank you, Councilman Hernandez.
Sorry, I wanted to ask a few questions on your budget.
Yes, sir.
You eliminated everything on, uh, the marshals for your budget except the professional services. I'm assuming that's your bailiffs and your security?
That is correct, sir.
And that's gonna be reporting directly to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, um, you also have, um, you have a doubling in your postage expenses. Uh, is that also in compensation of the marshals?
Right. So some of the marshals were issuing before, uh, summonses, and as they printed summonses, these were being re- taken out of the budget. Uh, when we, the, when I say we, the administration overexpends, um, our budget in notices that we're mailing, then we tend to use some of their budget as well. This budget will go away, once the marshals will go away as well.
Okay, and then, uh, again, uh, just wanted to point out, your building maintenance, uh, charges allocation has more than, uh, tripled. Um, so, again, that's Charles, I'm assuming that's, that's, uh...
Same story, Councilman Hernandez. We'll get you that information.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we have one more department that was scheduled to go, so it's up to the pleasure of the council, if you'd like to head Development Services, Code Enforcement, Al Raymond and his team are here. We could reschedule it for Thursday.
Thursday what time? Did you say? Thursday what time?
Thursday at nine o'clock is when we begin our workshop, workshop, this Thursday at nine.
Oh, you mean in addition? Okay, add it to...
We could, we could, if you, if the pleasure of the council is to break now, we can move this to the, uh, beginning of the schedule on Thursday morning, and see if we can get everything done. If not, we'll just, you know, keep bumping the last...
So maybe schedule it at eight-thirty?
What's that?
Maybe schedule this at eight-thirty so that we don't...
Eight-thirty at the co- okay. Okay, right, it's up to council. The team's here. It won't take too long, I don't think.
Well, hold on a second, that's one person. Hold on. What, what was that? Or... Yeah, well, is there any, I mean, if we do go over, that's not an issue in terms of the schedule, what was scheduled and what was put out publicly?
Right, we're fine to continue the meeting.
We are. So, so how long is this, how long is your, your part? And not to, I don't mean that disrespectfully. Five minutes? You're like, that depends on you.
Gil, you're gonna have to leave, so...
Yeah. Gil, it's lunchtime. It's...
Sorry, I'm, I'm ready for them, so...
Can we, are you, gentlemen, are you okay?
I've got a lunch, I'm pretty committed to it.
Okay, you have a lunch, he has a lunch, so we're, I don't know that this is really gonna work out. I know you, you have a commitment. I do too, I can push it back a little, but, um, I don't know that that's gonna meet the purpose. So let's go in, reschedule.
We can reschedule to Thursday. Uh, did you want us to keep to the nine o'clock or try to get...
I don't know, with the, with the open meetings, uh, can we, can we go earlier? With the, I mean, since, are we three days in advance? Can we change it?
Yeah, sorry, Hernandez is right. We already published the, uh, it's too late to do it at eight-thirty, because we already, we need a seventy-two hour notice.
Oh, okay, so it would have to be at nine?
Right. We need a seventy-two hour notice, we already, Al is telling me, we're not enough, we're not...
That's fine. So then we'll start at nine, and then, um, we'll probably end up going over. So everybody, we should all plan.
Let's plan for going over on Thursday then.
Going another half hour over on Thursday. We might not. You're right. This is libraries, health district, animal care, sustainability and coastal, yeah. We may not go over. Let's do that. We'll start at nine o'clock with Development Services. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, but I really would like, and ladies, and ladies, sorry. Well, Al's standing up, I'm looking at him. Um, we, we've got too many people that are gonna be out, and, and we need, you know, everyone here, this very important department. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our briefing then today.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, um, there being no further business, I'll adjourn this meeting until, um, Thursday at nine AM, which is our second workshop.